We call the voter selectmen meeting for October 16th, 2017 to order. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must notify the chairman. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Anyone for weekly briefing?
Hi, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. The first thing I wanted to do is thank everyone for coming out in the rain to touch a truck. I'd really like to thank the departments that helped out, the Water Department, the Highway Department, Channel 18, Jamie gave out free ice cream, the police, fire. We had well over 100 individuals. I'd also like to thank the chairman who came out to support us as well. Thank you. But we're gonna try it again and hope for nicer weather, but it was a great time for anyone who was there, even though it was a little wet.
A little.
A lot of wet. On Friday, October 20th, is our boutique. If kids need costumes, they can come over. Everything is free. Stop in, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And if you'd still like to donate, we're still taking costumes, so. On Tuesday, October 31st, is our Safe Halloween in the Community Center. This is our 16th year doing it. We average about 300 kids who come through there, and I'd really like to take a moment just to thank, I will do it more formally, but all the people who have been donating. We have over 60 pizzas donated. The community has really come together to support this. And the last one is a new one, the Support Our Troops, Cape Cod Cares for Our Troops. The drop-off boxes at the Community Center, again, we do this each year. I'm announcing it now because we have to have the things back in by November 14th. So you'll see these flyers on our website and around town, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carolyn, what kinds of things should we put into the Support Our Troops?
The little wish lists is at the bottom, but for those of you who aren't here, there's like hats and gloves and travel games, scratch, oh, no, deodorant, scratch tickets for me. I don't know where I scratched, there's no scratch tickets on there. Sunscreen, socks, that kind of thing. So there's a whole list, and we'll post that, and we have them up, and people are usually very generous with that. So thank you for asking.
Thank you. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement? Consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move the following consent agenda item. Vote to remove Tom Stellwell as a member of the Planning Board per the recommendation of the Planning Chair due to lack of attendance.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I haven't had the chance to look because the charter actually calls for a specific number of sequential absences, and I want to look at their minutes to make absolutely certain, so I'm gonna abstain for this.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Thank you. Next up, public hearings and presentations. First up tonight is the Green Communities presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. For the record, my name is Larry Cole, Chairman of the Energy Committee, and before introducing our guest speaker, I'd just like to recognize our committee, other committee members who are here this evening. Valerie Bell, Charles Check, our newest member whom we just met for the first time, Valerie Bell.
I'm sorry.
Kerry Hayden. There's only one Valerie Bell. The other, another point I'd like to make is in response to Ms. Kavanaugh's question last week about the status of the docket in front of the DPU about a contest between National Grid and the Cape Light Compact over who has ownership of customers for the energy efficiency programs. The hearings are over, and the decision from the DPU is pending. This is not just a catfight between two utilities. It has implications.
Larry, Larry, let's stick to the presentation. This isn't on the agenda, so let's not talk about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Our guest speaker this evening is Mr. Seth Pickering, who is the Southeast Regional Coordinator for the Green Communities Program, which is part of the Division of Energy Resources. He's going to make a brief presentation and then answer your questions. And you may have noticed today on the front page of the Cape Cod Times, there was an article about our neighbor, Yarmouth, considering green communities, and the issues that were summarized were reasonably well presented, and he will address them.
Thank you, Larry.
To the table.
And Seth, if you want me to advance a slide just a second.
Okay, great. Thank you, Larry.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me all right? Okay. So, let's see then, I'm gonna fall along here so I don't have to turn around. You guys can all see the presentation?
Yeah.
I'll be brief, go right through my presentation, and then any and all questions you have, I'll do my best to answer. So my name is Seth Pickering. I work for the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division. I work out of the Lakeville DEP office in Lakeville, Mass. I'm the Regional Coordinator for 84 cities and towns here in the Southeast Region, including the Cape and the Islands. So our division, the Green Communities Division, on the next slide, yep, was created by the Green Communities Act of 2008, and my division's function is to assist all municipalities with anything that's energy-related. Next slide, please. So the types of thing that we ask towns to do is to form energy committees, take a look at, trying to get a handle on what their buildings are using for energy and what might be the ones that could be best served by some efficiency programs, like the ones that you do with the Cape Light Compact currently, and a number of other things. We can assist you in your interactions with the utilities to get audits done and to provide the services that are available through my division. So, this, next slide, please, is a list of a number of the different resources that are available to you through my division, okay? So the grant and designation program is our biggest one. To date, Commonwealth-wide, we've granted just a little less than $80 million for energy efficiency projects to the 185 green communities that there are here in the state. But if towns don't choose to become green communities, there are a number of other things that we can help you out with. We have a free energy tracking tool called Mass Energy Insight. It's available free to all municipalities that I believe Harwich is already using. Again, we interact with towns and the utilities on the municipal energy efficiency program. We have a good working relationship with the Compact and with National Grid Gas down here on the Cape, and a number of other things that we can help you out with, including these municipal energy technical assistance grants, where we can actually help the town get some help with some of the things that we might ask you to do once you become designated as a green community for record-keeping and reporting. Next slide, please. So to become designated as a green community, a city or town has to do five different things. We call them five different criteria. Two of them do require, in town government, they require town meeting votes. The first one is zoning-related. We ask that towns adopt as-of-right siting, and I'll get into the details of this and a little bit more. So we ask that you basically pass zoning for as-of-right siting, and you have three different options, for alternative or renewable energy generation, for manufacturing, or for R&amp;D. Anything that would be subject to that zoning bylaw also is required to have what we call an expedited permitting process, which really only means the local permits that might be issued for projects that would be applicable to that need to be acted on within 365 days, which is usually the normal course for most cities and towns, anyway. The third requirement is the town has to develop what's called an energy reduction plan. So the town looks at all of the energy that it's using, and you develop what we call baseline year, and then we work with you, with the Compact and Grid Gas, using audits that they will provide at no cost to the town, to try to develop what we call a 20% reduction plan from that baseline. It's something that towns might think about doing whether they decide to become a green community or not, because when you interact with your capital, you know, your capital budget planning and things like that, it can be very helpful. Fourth requirement is the town has to adopt a fuel-efficient vehicle purchase policy. This is a prospective policy, and we can get into the detail a little bit more on that. There are no mandates for electric vehicles or hybrids or anything of that nature, and most of your vehicle fleet is gonna be exempt from the policy to begin with. The fifth requirement is towns have to adopt what's called the Stretch Code here in Massachusetts. It is part of the Energy Building Code, and it's applicable at this time only to new residential construction. No additions, no renovations are applicable to it, and there are also some commercial applications that would be applicable to it as well, commercial industrial buildings over 100,000 square feet. So those are the five criteria. These are the basic steps that we ask towns to perform to get involved with green communities if you'd like to. Harwich is probably already in at least step two. We're here discussing what the designation requirements are with the local government, and then, you know, we're happy to come back and share any amount of information that you'd like, if you want to try to figure out if you want to pursue, become designated. So get into a little bit of the detail on the five criteria. So on the next slide, so here are your options. You can do renewable or alternative energy generation facilities. We have a couple of different categories. You can do wind, if appropriate, and as we know down here in the Cape, that has not been a popular option. We understand that. But you can also do solar, ground-mounted solar. You'd have to do zoning for a 250-kilowatt or greater system, which a rule of thumb is about an acre of land, and so anything that's that big and bigger, you can do discrete parcels here in town that are appropriate based on your existing zoning, if that's the way you feel. So that's one option, and a number of towns have done that. If you have already industrially zoned land here in town, you can use the manufacturing or the R&amp;D opportunity as an overlay in your existing industrial zones. So, you know, as we know, zoning bylaws require two-thirds majority and a town meeting vote. Second criteria is, as I stated before, anything that's applicable to that, those as-of-right siting types of projects, the town has to have in place the local autonomy permitting. So, you know, building inspection, CONCOM, things of that nature that are local control. You have to be able to act on the permit, application within 365 days. There's nothing in there, there's nothing hiding in there for any presumptive approvals or anything like that. It's just that the applicant needs to get an answer. So for the next one, criteria three, so your baseline will include your energy use, and again, that Mass Energy Insight, energy tracking tool can be used for this, and one thing I want to mention about Mass Energy Insight, all of your utility-based accounts, so any of your electric accounts and any of your natural gas accounts, the usage data for all of those accounts is automatically inputted into Mass Energy Insight. So there would be no work effort involved here in Town Hall on the usage. There is some upfront dashboard work that needs to be done, where you assign the correct accounts the way that the town might like them to, to different departments, and assign them to the correct buildings. But in terms of the monthly update of usage information, so that you can actually track your, you know, your energy usage, your natural gas and electric accounts, it's all automatically updated by the utilities. So all of your municipal buildings and the schools, now that you've gone to Monomoy, we'd be looking at the schools that are only, if you wish, you can either choose to include the schools that only Harwich kids go to, I'm not sure exactly what the setup is, but your schools that Harwich children only attend, you can include them in your baseline, or you can choose not to, depending on, you know, how your funding is set up with the regional school district. So municipal buildings, all your vehicles, and any municipally-owned streetlights and traffic lights. So basically, all the usage here in town. So the next slide just shows you the kind of reporting that is available through Mass Energy Insight. It's a really very powerful tool. You can really, you know, you can do trends, you can look at individual buildings, it's really, has a lot of really good uses if you start using it. So the next one, next criteria, is the town would have to adopt a fuel-efficient vehicle purchase policy. So I purposely put up on this screen most of the vehicles that are not subject to the policy, so that the DPW Director and the Fire Chief and the Police Chief don't worry about, you know, having to meet anything that's unreasonable. So, well, let's see, sometimes it's not a popular thing, but it's really, truthfully, this is not a difficult requirement. It's prospective, okay? So we're gonna, we would ask you if you're gonna apply to be a green community, we would ask you to supply us with a vehicle inventory, but the only purpose for that would be to look and see which vehicles you have that would be subject to the policy, so that when you replace them, you'd have to meet the policy with the replacement. So police cruises are exempt until they're commercially available, which we don't see in the foreseeable future. And then on heavy-duty vehicles, the weight limit threshold is 8,500 pounds, which is as small as a three-quarter ton pickup truck. So, you know, it's really your administrative vehicles in nature that would be subject to this, okay? Fifth one is Stretch Code. Again, town meeting vote, you can do it as, you know, a general bylaw warrant article. If Harwich is really interested in pursuing this, we'd be glad to come back, have as many public forums as you might wish to share information on what the Stretch Code is and what it's not. It has evolved over the course of the last eight years since our program first got started. When we first started, there was a pretty big difference between, you know, the base energy code here in Massachusetts and the Stretch Code, but as of January 1st of this year, the two codes are very, very similar. There's a small difference in price for a Stretch Code home that is more than made up for in energy efficiency savings for people. And again, as I stated earlier, it's only subject now in residential, for new residential construction. So what that means is that the building code that Harwich is under right now for renovations and additions, that would not change if you voted the Stretch Code. So next screen, so, okay, so there are 351 municipalities here in Commonwealth, right? We're up to 185 as of last December. You'll see from my next slide that we have 207 Stretch Code communities. So somewhere between 18 and probably about 22 new communities are gonna be applying this year. The deadline is coming up at the end of October, and we're assuming that most of them will be granted designation. So it's not a stretch to say that by the end of 2017, we're probably gonna have over 200 of the 351 municipalities in the state as green communities. Slide 14 is the Stretch Code cities and towns. So can we go back one? So Stretch Code's been the issue in my region. So if you know where Braintree is and draw a diagonal down there to the corner of Rhode Island and rent them, everything's south and east of there is my region. So Bristol County, southern Plymouth County in the Cape, haven't been too crazy about Stretch Code. And so a lot of that was based on the big difference initially in the economy, but things have really changed quite a bit, really even in the last three years. Just as a, just as a point so that everybody understands, when the Green Communities Act of 2008 was enacted, one of the things that happens now in Massachusetts every three years is the, the energy portion of the building code is updated, okay? And it's based off the IECC code that is for the next three years. And I feel very comfortable telling people that are, you know, that are talking about the Stretch Code now, is that really, the Stretch Code really just ends up being pretty much the next iteration of what the base code's gonna be through the IECC or something very, very close. So it's been, you know, it's been a bit of a culture change, a difference in the way people operate, but the performance testing and verification that's required by the Stretch Code is really what's coming in the future. So if you're a couple of years ahead, a lot of times we've found that builders appreciate that because it means that they are ahead of the curve, what they're gonna have to learn and how they're gonna have to do it in the future. Of all of our towns that have adopted the Stretch Code, none of them have renounced it, which is an option. You know, if Harwich adopted it and found out that it wasn't working well for them at the next town meeting, if you wanted to renounce it, that would be your option. So in terms of the grant, your designation grant is based on a formula, it's based on population and per capita income. Harwich is about 12,000 people. I'd be guessing on your per capita, but your initial grant would probably be somewhere between 140 and $160,000. So, and we don't have any standard town. We have them as small as, you know, Hatfield out in Western Mass, and as big as Boston. Let's see, we're up to, I'll just type it in my presentation, I apologize. That should say we're over $79 million in what we've awarded to date as of this summer. And I can provide you with the website link that will, you can look at our, we have a map of all of our green communities, and behind there is a spreadsheet that tells you every single town that's been designated, when it was designated, how much it's gotten in grant money, and what those projects were. So the next slide.
What's that link? What is that link?
I'll get it to you. It's kinda long, and they're changing our website as well, so I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
So here's some examples of some of the towns not too far from here, the ones on the Cape. You know, I have four Cape towns that are green communities, two on the Vineyard, and a couple that I've listed here that aren't too far off the Cape. And so the ones that are, you know, well over $200,000 are towns that have received a designation grant and then at least one competitive grant. You're not eligible for competitive grants until you're designated as a green community, but towns like Acushnet have received over half a million dollars from us. Those projects are, for the most part, done and installed, and they're realizing savings. Lakeville in particular, up near where I'm at, they've received that much money, and they've actually hit their target for a 20% reduction in five years. And so it's difficult to put a number on the savings, but, you know, because things have trended and actually, you know, as you probably well know, energy prices haven't been too bad in the last five years, but as we also saw with the recent hurricanes, you don't know when there's gonna be a spike. So Mashpee, Provincetown, Truro, Wellfleet, all Cape towns, Mashpee's been in since the inception. And what I'd really recommend is, you know, if I can make the connections for you, I'll be happy to do it, but if, you know, at the types of things that you go to, to interact with your peers in the towns that are green communities, you know, feel them out, ask them how it's working for them. They'll tell you whether they think it's working well for them or not. And then my last, my next-to-last slide just explains some of what I've already talked about, our interaction with the utilities, you know, and how we can help you maximize what they can do for you as municipalities through their three-year plans that they are required to implement here in Massachusetts, so. My last slide is my contact information. Again, I do work for a state agency, but I'm reasonably local. There are four of us in the different regions of Massachusetts, and, you know, I'm from here, so whatever I can do to help out people from the region, I'm happy to do.
Great.
So any questions?
Thank you, Seth. Don? Also? Do you know?
No questions for the presentation.
Larry?
Thanks.
I have several questions.
Sure.
I heard this presentation several years ago, and I had a question about the Stretch Codes at that time, and you're right, they give us some trouble because there's a large difference. And you're saying those differences have come down, so they're closer, or they will come down in the future? I was kinda lost.
So they have. So as of January 1st of this year of 2017, it was a new base code that went into effect here in Massachusetts and a new Stretch Code. And the fundamental difference between the two is that for residential new construction for Stretch Code house, you have to get a HERS rating of 55 or lower. A base code home doesn't require the HERS rating, but it really requires almost everything else that's required under the Stretch Code, including blow door test, envelope testing, and duct testing, you know, duct tightness testing. And for those to be done correctly according to the code, those are supposed to be done by a HERS raider.
Recycling of cars gave me some problems before, and it continues to do so, because even though police cars are exempt, we recycle those cars for our.
Yeah, I saw them all in the parking lot.
Right. And that would continue until, because, you know, we start with a police car.
So.
And that's a tough one to justify, actually environmentally or economically, because they put on an average of 3,000 miles a year, not a lot of miles. They'll require a lot of maintenance. It's told today, average about $400 a year. And to make that difference up, and even if you were to look at buying hybrids, you know, you have a big energy impact for a few miles. So I have some problem with that.
So I don't have the details on what your fleet actually, how it performs, so it's not for me to say. Truthfully, that's what that policy's for. It's to basically stop that practice. They're, you know, they're higher polluting. I, again, I'm not here to debate not knowing, you know, what the facts are in terms of what the actual usage is. You should check, but you could check in with other towns. There are, there are things that we can help you, put you in touch with people that are interested in buying the fleet, so that you'd be compensated for at least those vehicles, and then kinda move on from there. But I would recommend checking in with other towns to see how they've made out with that.
I would understand the higher polluting if we were doing, putting on a lot of miles. Where that argument leads me is when we're putting on such few miles. The zoning by right, you know, we have a lot of zoning issues in town, and I'm not sure, and those are tough to get through, as we know, you talk of windmills, we, you know, did that exercise. And for me, in the zoning fights we have in town, or debates we have in town, quite frankly, that's not my number one. My number one would be affordable housing. It might be some other uses like that, rather than getting this. So that's just my, my view on this. I mean, everyone wants to go energy efficient, and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if we have Dan Pelleter present some of their findings on where we are now. Because we've always, you mentioned, we've taken good steps on, you know, tracking where we are and proposing some energy efficiency steps, but this kinda binds me in a funny way on recycling and on the zoning by right, just because that's a, that's a tough one to get through. Let me ask you a question. If we don't, if we do the 20% plan, you know, and we don't make that in five years, what happens?
There's no downside, there's no penalty. It's, you know, it's considered, you know, a plan to get through your designation. If you make it, that's great. If you don't, there's no penalty to the town. In fact, we continue to work with our towns to try to figure out how to get to where they want to be at.
And that's, and that's, I applaud that, because you offer us help regardless, and that's, that's really good.
Yep.
What's that? Julie?
So I just wanna revisit, it's only a one-acre parcel that you would have to designate, isn't it?
So it's a rule of thumb. It's, so it isn't actually the size of the lot. It would have to be able to facilitate a 250-kilowatt ground-mounted system or greater, and you could use an acre as, as a rule of thumb. You probably want to do a little bit more than that, because you probably want your interconnection equipment, you know, transformers, inverters, and things like that to be able to be sited close by. So that's, that's a rule of thumb.
And in terms of other, other savings, am I correct in understanding that mechanicals such as boilers and things like that, that we'd be able to?
They'd be eligible for our grant money as well. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, that's, so, so that, to me, kind of offsets the car issue. I mean, I think that overall, that some of those savings and what we're saving in gas and such would be a good offset for me. And what about, what type of risk, if any, do we take by waiting? What is gonna be, you have a couple?
So, so let me give you a quick. So, so let me give you a quick chronology on your potential to apply. So, the earliest you'll be able to apply is like right around now, next year. So, that's as soon as you can do it. So, that's a whole year, you know, you're thinking that you're going to have to go to town meeting, you're probably going to want, you guys have more than one town meeting or just an annual?
Just the annual.
Okay, so, you know, you'd want to get things squared away for your votes. On the stretch code, you can put an effective date in the stretch code, so if you voted in April or May, you can say the effective date with your anticipated application for green communities designation in the fall, you could make it like January 1st of 2019, if that's what you'd like to do. So, I mean, that's what you're looking at, otherwise you're looking at another year after that. You know, the only downside is, is that you're not going to be eligible for the grant money.
Right.
And if you're, you know, in your capital plan, you're doing things that you gain energy efficiency, we don't let you go back ad infinitum on setting your baseline. You know, it's really, it should be reasonably close, we, right now, we usually let towns go back at least two fiscal years if they need to, if they want to. So, so that, you know, that's the only downside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did look at this several years ago, probably eight years ago when it first came out and I did think it was kind of onerous, I did not recommend it in the community that I was in. But I do think that one of the things that I just want to make a couple of comments, you know, energy cost is one of the, a big cost driver in any municipal budget. And I know since the advent of Sean Libby, the facility maintenance, you know, and we have Cape Lake Compact here, we have an active energy committee, that we have gone and done a considerable amount, so I just want to make sure the board's aware, like even the boilers, I think we're replacing boilers and have replaced boilers and to become more energy efficient. The thing that I was concerned back before when I looked at it, and quite honestly concerned again, would be that we just need to look at the as of right, where is the acre parcel, do we get credit for having a solar farm already on our DPW facility? So the town has engaged and done a considerable amount.
Right.
And I think that if this promotes more in the private sector, then that makes sense. But I know my town planner's in the audience and my DPW director, I would just like to make sure that we go through to see what the impact is. I don't remember last time that the grants were that significant, so 125 or 150,000 to add to is a pretty good chunk of money. So that's something that it has a little bit more carrot and stick, if you would, this time out. And it's something I would like to have you come back and meet with staff and go over the implementation plan to see where our opportunities are. But at least in the core philosophy for me is you go after all your expenses to see where there's an opportunity for savings. And the number of times Sean has told me, stop asking, I've looked at the energy stuff, so I know he has actively looked at it. The fleet is something, you know, quite honestly, when you eliminate all those vehicles, we're probably down to five or six.
Usually not many.
So, you know, we're not talking about a huge number, but that's something too that, you know, I would be willing to look at if there was credits related to buying some of these hybrid cars or hybrid vehicles. So I would just like, especially if we have until next October, I would like to certainly look at it and I'm much more favorably inclined to doing it. The stretch code was a big issue in my last community and I think that you're right, that that has evolved and changed, so it's much closer. So I don't think the stretch code is going to be as big of a hurdle as the, as right on the location. But I think it's doable and I'd like to have the opportunity to just kind of put together some kind of plan to see how we would get that in place. Thank you, Chris.
So I can answer your question on credit for already having solar facilities in town? If it was cited through a special permit process, so the answer's no, it would not, it would not meet criteria one?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as you've discussed, the next opportunity for us to apply would be next fall and that implies, involves having an article ready on these zoning issues for May town meeting. And it's quite a lot of work involved, they have to go through the planning, with the planner and the planning board and so on. So the committee, I'm pleased to hear what the town administrator said, that he'd like the opportunity to look into this seriously. We need a signal from you if you want to pursue it or not in the fairly near future, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, under public hearing and presentation is the annual meeting with the Board of Selectmen for the Voter Information Committee.
How are you? I'm Chris Joyce, Voter Information Committee. In your packet tonight is a year-to-date report and it'll serve as the basis of our submittal for the town's annual report. Your instructions tonight were very clear, you asked the board chairs to address four areas. The first one, member attendance, we've had eight absences. Four of those were at our day programs, where as you know, we often tape on Channel 18. Three of our members work either full-time or as a consultant, so frankly, I'm not concerned about those absences. And I'd mention also that we've always had a quorum at all of our meetings regardless if it's a day meeting or not. And all our members, the second item, all our members are sworn in. Ethics testing is up to date, we've been very timely posting our agenda and our minutes, thanks to Peg Rose, our clerk, usually are prepared by the next meeting and approved then. A final note, I'm quick, aren't I? A final note, voter information is short, one member, I understand a candidate is being scheduled for an interview and may attend Wednesday's meeting of our own committee, just to see what we do for a living. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, Larry?
No, nice job.
Thank you.
Julie?
No, just thank you for the great work you guys did.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
Don?
All right.
Get up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Bike Ways Committee.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Doc, and on behalf of the Bike Ways Committee, we are a seven-member committee, we currently during the past year lost two of our long-tenured members. So at this point, we'd just like to formally thank Dennis Moser for his service to the committee, he was on the committee for more than seven years. And furthermore, we'd like to thank Mike Glenn for his service to the committee, he was on the committee for more than five years. And was really an invaluable resource to the committee for his, for his helping the liaison to the town and specifically to Link Cooper when we needed maintenance-type issues done. Our committee meets once a month on the third Wednesday of the month. We are open to the public, we do abide by all the open meeting law regulations that are both municipal in nature and also the state regulations, including the one that was just revised and became effective October 6th, 2017. So at this point, we have six members, we are one member short of our full panel of seven. The members are myself, our de facto vice chair, who's also here tonight, and that's Paul Gazai. The other members are Eric Levy, Bruce Page, Shannon Neely and our chairman, Franz Soluski. In terms of our activities and accomplishments over the past year, probably the, the one we're most pleased with is we've continued the trend that the committee had started a few years ago with installing warning lights at dangerous traffic intersections that the OCRT, that the Old Colony Rail Trail as well as the Cape Cod Rail Trail goes over. In years past, they had put in these warning lights at, on Route 39, Orleans Road, just east of Main Street, as well as put one in on Great Western Road in Western Harwich there. So this past year, we were able to get these solar-powered, motion-activated, early warning system, that's code for the crossing lights at Queen Anne, installed. The other thing the committee was actively doing all year was recommending any maintenance work that needed to be done on the trail. And at this point, the committee has just also asked me to formally thank Link Cooper for all his work getting everything done and being responsive to our requests for things that needed to be done on the trail. Specifically, the entire center line of the Old Colony Rail Trail was repainted all the way from the South Harwich Town Line through Thompson Field to Route 39, which again is Orleans Road there. There was also a lot of roots that were starting to bubble up through the trail, thus there was repaving to smooth it out. And the committee also, as a new member of the committee, it also, it struck me and impressed me, I mean, not to get into things too much on a granular level, but, you know, when anything needed to be done, when there was overgrowth of foliage, of brush, when there was overwashes on the trail such as after Tropical Storm Jose, I mean, the trail was almost unrideable because of soil and sand that had become washed onto the trail. All those problems are squared away awfully quickly, and again, that's a result of Link Cooper and that's also a result of a member of our committee, who's Eric Levy, who's the supervisor at Nickerson State Park, who works for the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the state, takes care of maintenance-type issues for the Cape Cod Rail Trail as opposed to the Old Colony Rail Trail that we handle on a town basis. In terms of future plans and objectives, we have high aspirations and hopes, we'd like to get another warning light put in on Route 24, just north of, just north of Route 6, that's Pleasant Lake Avenue there, near that general store that has just, just changed names. I'm sure everyone knows which one, I mean, I can't recall the new name of it, by the general store there. And that application has been submitted in a timely manner, that was just within the past 10 days submitted to the CPC for consideration. We have not received a date yet when they will review that. Furthermore, the benches at the Harwich Bike Rotary, which is just, let's see, that's just west of downtown here, there's been some, they've been, become a little bit rundown, a little bit dysfunctional and we're working on getting those replaced. We may have some volunteers that are going to do that, but that'll, it looks like we're going to be able to take care of that without any involvement from the Department of, from Link or his department. We are also investigating a, working with, let's see, working with the Cranberry Harvest Committee for some sort of recognition or events related to the 20th anniversary of the Old Colony Rail Trail, which is next year, and including some sort of events related to that in the 2018 Cranberry Harvest Festival. A member of our committee has already met with the chair of that committee, so that'll be moving forward. Furthermore, we have explored a little bit of branding issues with the OCRT as opposed to the CCRT, perhaps getting out the word about the separate and distinct nature of the two trails. And along those lines, investigating a possible collaboration with the Chatham Bike Ways Committee regarding some unified signage or maps for the OCRT. I mean, the OCRT is eight miles long, it's roughly half in Harwich, half in Chatham. And Chatham puts out their own maps for it, just referencing Chatham and just showing Chatham. So we're trying to get with that crew and say, look, let's put, let's get these maps so that both towns are shown in the map. I mean, it would be far more effective for people's usage if it did show that. We also do have crossing light, we have crossing light counters that show, that measure the trail usage that are at two of our locations, the Great Western Road and the Route 39 intersections. And we have a member of the committee that's evaluating that data to, well, to be able to help us form a blueprint for future plans for, so we can, you know, show the full usage of the trail. Let's see, and that's all we have planned for the next year at this point. We have a meeting on Wednesday, we're coming up with new projects every week, so we will submit those for fiscal year 2019. But that is what our plans are for next year.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Questions, Janelle?
Andrew, do you have the new charge, was that voted in?
Yeah, the new charge, I'm aware that our liaison for the board met with a member of our committee and the charge that we'd initially submitted was, was a little, perhaps it was a little unwelty, you know, it was a little lengthy, a little long. So that will be shortened up according, pursuant to your request.
And it's going to be voted upon this week, you mean?
Yeah.
I've seen it already.
Yeah.
That's why I asked, okay.
Right, well, it was my understanding that the one that's currently on the town website is the one that's being revised, is that correct? Okay, so the one that's actually up is, is the one that, that was thought to be a little bit too, too involved, not to the point. So Paul and I are going to take care of that and we're going to, we're going to trim it down to something a lot more. Yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that.
Thanks.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question out of curiosity, because I get the question posed to me and I drive around a lot. Are we using the same crossing signals in all of the locations, we have them? Because it seems like periodically, there's an awful lot of false positives for somebody coming along and when that happens, people start ignoring the mere existence of the signal.
Yeah, it's my understanding that there were a lot of false positives, but it's also my understanding that those occurred more last year and the year before. I've been on the committee six months and we haven't heard of those occurring, we haven't heard complaints about that occurring recently. So whether that problem has been fixed, you know, one can only hope.
I'm kind of bringing that up though.
Oh, go ahead, Don.
Because if you're going to put another one in, I'm seeing in other towns that they have different makes and models of them. I'm not sure whether you're interested in looking at the range available there.
Well, the company we had used for the, for the prior ones, I agree, there were some false positives, at least at the beginning. And it's my understanding the kinks in the system were worked out. If that's not correct, our meeting is, is this Wednesday, is two days from now, that's something that we can certainly bring up ASAP.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think two comments. One, we definitely had a lot of issues with the one that was installed at 39. And what they, what happened is it has a sensor that you have to have a certain area and the sensor was reading people too far away, so it would record them and by the time it got, the light went off. So they went out and they tweaked it, like any new technology, it does require some tweaking. I haven't heard any additional issues, I do drive through there, so if there are ones that are malfunctioning, you know, we've had some fairly nasty weather too and the sensors could have been, you know, needing to be adjusted. So I think it is a little bit of technology, you know, the technology works as long as it's set up and geared in the right way. The second, I think, and I know Link's here, but I think as things evolve, different models come out, so you probably do see an upgrade in the model. So I don't think we can buy a model that's five years old anymore. So you're going to see a little bit, but I think functionally, they operate very similar to how they would operate in terms of old and new models.
Thank you, Chris. Link, did you have to add anything or is that summarize? Fine. Don, any further questions? Julie?
I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Larry?
An observation, Chris, on the lights is when they come on, I don't see anyone there, but I slow down, sometimes it'll be long. but I slow down, sometimes it'll be long gone. It, the light's on for others, so there, maybe if you can narrow down the focus a little bit, that would help that.
Great question.
Because you can see there's a bike, but it's been, been gone. Question I had, and thanks for the working on the roots and on the sand, because that's, the roots keep cropping up, and the sand's basically dangerous if you have a, but let me ask you a question. Other towns, and I think we've had discussions here in the past of extending the right bike trails off of the bike path, in other words, have share of the road trails so you can get, say, to Red River Beach, and with proper signage and, have you, has your committee looked at those types of, of passage, you know, bike trails?
Yeah, we need to, perhaps there does need to be a few more signs saying, you know, for example, from getting one from, from the center of town here down to Harwich Port, and then down to, oh, the Bank Street Beach, and the beaches there. The committee has, there is a map online on our, on the town website, if you go to the Bike Ways Committee link on the website there, there is a map that shows exactly those trails right to the beach and everything. But perhaps, perhaps you're correct, I mean, maybe they should be signed better on the actual, on the roads, rather than just something on the website.
At one point, we had a paper map, too, that we handed out that showed those, but I'm not sure if people paid, I don't think that's as effective, having some signs on the road that would greet people there. Just a discussion point for you.
Absolutely, we'll put it in the agenda.
Thank you. Just as matter of formality, once you guys vote the new charge, it will have to come back to us for final approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Link Cooper, DPW Director. My head's about to explode when they get done with that report there. A couple of things.
Because you've got so much credit.
It's not me, folks, they are eyes and ears out on the trail. We don't have employees that use that trail on a daily basis, like we all drive around and get to work, so it's really critical to have people that know how to get a hold of me, aren't shy about getting a hold of me, and if the litmus test is, is it serves the residents and users of the trail, we do it. And most of the time, what they ask for makes sense and should get done. As far as the lights, it is a constant adjustment battle, they don't do well in weather, they're susceptible to radio frequency interference, and Sean has spent an inordinate amount of time dialing these in. Now, I will say, I was initially very pleased with the Queen Anne Road one, that I have to go through there at least twice a day, usually many more times than that, and I've grown to that light is the bane of my existence. And every time I, it's on, somebody stops, and sure enough, there's somebody there. It's not false positives, it's the duration seems to be a little longer, and it's the interaction of the early warning, of the early morning lights. But the Bike Committee, in my opinion, does a really good job at alerting us, and when there's hazards, something that needs to be addressed along the trail, and I thank them for that.
Thank you, Link. Next up is the Trails Committee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Selectmen. My name's Wayne Kushe Stone. I'm new to the chairman's job, so I'm not sure of all the things that's supposed to be going down with the position, but Elizabeth, who's recently appointed, the two of us are replacing two longtime members, Matt Cushing and Jerry Schuman, and first, I want to thank them both, because they taught us a lot about what's going on, but not enough to do this as correctly as I would like. The agenda that I would like to speak on tonight concerns a lot of matters on the Trails Committee. The first one being, we'd like a better relationship with the Selectmen's Office. We are beholden to you. No one ever shows up at our meetings, there's no liaison, no Board of Selectmen, I know you people are all busy, I expect to see a liaison once in a while, but it doesn't seem to happen, so that matters that we deem important while we hold our meetings, they don't go up the stairs like we want them to. Second agenda I'd like to talk about is trash receptacles. It's time the town to pay attention to the properties that we own as conservation land. The trash is horrendous. It's time we install proper trash containers in all the respected areas, the kind you see in city parks, not the kind that can be stolen, or dented, or animals tear apart the trash bags that I put out. We need proper trash bags, and we need to deal with the issue seriously. And speaking on the issue of trash, there's no reason that the trash in the rest of the town should be $300 fine, and the trash on the beach be $1,000. It should all be $1,000 throughout the town, and we need to start an agenda to, such as, "Don't Trash Harwich," signs all over the town, because you drive through our town, every side road, every main road, littered with nip bottles, throwaway fast food containers, you name it, I don't have to go into it, I pick it up every day. Next agenda, Bell's Neck Through, Road. The reason for all the trash that exists in Bell's Neck Road is the Through Road. People don't want to pay the $160 fine, or penalty, fine, trash fee, so they slide through the late hours in the afternoon, throw their trash in the bush, dump brush everywhere, they're starting to fill in wetlands in there that is of concern to me. I've brought this issue up many times at our meetings, but nothing seems to go up the stairs. But like I said, we need to deal with trash issue in the town of Harwich.
Wayne, have you ever taken the time to put this in writing to the Board of Selectmen or the town administration?
I've stood before you and talked about it, but I've never put it in writing. If you so like, I will do so.
Yeah, I think you should have a committee meeting and vote on, you know, a list of things you'd like to get done. Right now is really just a report.
Yep. Budget allotment, we have no budget allotment at all, we're using members' chainsaws and stuff, repairing kiosks. We get help from Amy and the Conservation Commission, but it's really, we shouldn't be taking money from her commission. It should be a small budget that we can deal with repairs and things of that matter.
Hang on one second, Wayne, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, just on that, the previous chairman had asked for a budget, a budget line was created, and I believe it was put under either DPW or Conservation, Conservation.
Under you.
Yeah, so there has been money that's been allocated for that.
Oh, it is, just for us, okay. I didn't want to draw from you if I didn't know.
No, no, it's specifically for trails.
Spoken on littering, hunting. I think it's time to stop hunting on conservation lands and stop talking about it.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you, because now you're turning this into a debate. This is a report of what you're.
I'm not talking about, I'm just agendas that I would like discussed.
Wayne, I'm going to stop you.
Yep.
Put your request into writing. I know you and your wife were before-town meeting two years ago on the hunting issue, but now is not a platform to get your point on hunting across.
Okay.
Amy can do that. Just give a report on what trails are doing, what's, maybe you've got some good to throw in your report.
I'm not familiar with this agenda, so as I'm sitting here and listening to the other committee members.
So it's a report.
I wasn't sure how this report was supposed to be formatted.
So now maybe we could conclude with something positive.
Yes, we can conclude. I'd just like one more thing, if there's any way, smoking, I would like to see it banned on all conservation land, simply tired of picking up cigarette butts. I'd like to thank Amy at the Conservation Commission. She has been most help to us with, she attends our meetings, and she's been most helpful with the Americor and other people who go through her office. She's been very helpful to us, and I wouldn't exist without her. I also would like to thank the DPW, I don't know the gentleman, but his department shows up every time I need their help, and I'm very thankful to them. The boys who work for him are really great, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address it. Next year, I'll have this in a more concise manner that you were looking for.
Thank you. Questions from the board, Larry?
Thank you, Trails Committee, you know, do yeoman's work. In the past, there's been discussions, especially on Bell's Neck, because of dumping, what you're talking about, putting out cameras there. Have you talked about that?
We, I don't know, it's in Amy's budget.
Cameras are getting cheaper, they're getting less expensive all the time, monitoring.
Mr. Chairman, just on that, I think when I started, we had the idea that we were going to put a hidden camera up and kind of catch people in the act, and I'm embarrassed to say this, but the camera we put up was stolen.
Yes.
So the, so it's, it's a tough, it's a tough area to enforce when, when the device to catch people is, is stolen itself.
And I do remember that, because then we had discussions about putting them higher and stuff, but.
We could certainly revisit it.
I know exactly where to hide them, if we have to do it again, I, yes. Anyone else?
Julie?
I don't, thank you.
Janelle?
So, Wayne, I am the liaison to the Trails Committee, and last year, approximately April, we, as a board, had decided, part of our goals and objectives for last year was to revisit the charges of all the committees. So the Trails Committee was the first one that I got to, and I'm still waiting for a new charge to be written, because the charge is outdated and inaccurate, actually. The charge says you only have seven members, but you're saying you have nine, so that needs to.
We do, but two people don't regularly appear.
Doesn't matter, that needs to be cleared up. It needs to be cleared up now, it needed to be cleared up back in April. So I understand that Jerry and Matt did retire from the committee, but I've been in contact with Liz quite a bit. I know you did not meet in July. I cannot come to those meetings, I have children. 3:45 on a Thursday is when the bus comes home. The buses will not drop children off who are in elementary school without a parent there.
I understand that.
So I'm not coming.
So can we get another liaison?
However, I am continually in contact with Liz. I was asking who became the chair this year, still really didn't know. My email is very easy to remember, it's iloveharwich@gmail, and I've been asking for communication. I still don't see that any charge has been written, so I'm willing to do a lot of work with you via email. I just cannot come to a Thursday at 3:45 meeting.
Understand, and I'm very bad at email, I hated email until I got this position, so I'm just learning how to make a group email, and so I'll make sure you're on the list, and I can communicate better with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don? So my recommendation, Janelle, is, is to work with the chair and figure out a time that the committee can meet, because an awful lot of what he spoke tonight clearly wasn't voted, and there seems to be an awful lot of problems. I particularly have a problem with you standing before us, saying you want to ban smoking, and you want to ban hunting, and you want to ban driving, and whatever else you said. So I think that.
I want the property to be used like it should be, a conservation land, not a dump zone.
Yeah, by the taxpayers of the town of Harwich, which purchased it. So I suggest that a meeting happen that you're at, and the whole committee's at, and we point out who hasn't taken ethics, and we, and what else hasn't been done on the list, and that we get some structure to this committee before they go any further and do anything else.
Okay.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Okay, next up, new business, and if it pleases the board, I would like to request that we bring Superintendent Sandborn is here, this is probably the quickest item on our new business, and rather than make him wait another hour to, for us to vote on this, on this item, if it's okay with the board, can we pop that out of line?
Yes.
So this is something that we told him that we would take up a while back when he came and did his presentation on the new school, so really, what he's looking for is support from the Board of Selectmen on the building project. With that, can I get a motion?
You want to go?
Sure. I'll move that we support the Cape Cod High School.
Cape Cod Tech.
Cape Cod Tech High School Building Project.
I second that.
Moved and seconded, discussion, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
Good.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, when the building gets all done, how much more square footage is it going to have than the existing building?
Is this on? This is on.
Yeah.
It will have approximately 5,000 more square feet. The current facility is 214,000, about 6,000, because the new facility would be 220,000 square feet.
I guess the next one's a follow-on question. Are you anticipating that it could hold more students, or is that just the consequence of shops being?
A lot of that is due to the minimum square footage allotments for the, from the Department of Ed. About 60% of our technical and academic classrooms are not large enough, a couple of them are large enough, so some of the square footage is for that. We came to an agreement with the MSBA for 650 students, which is kind of in the middle of the average of the last 10, 10 years for us, so no, I wouldn't anticipate more students. We're not building for a big population increase.
This isn't really off point, because I think of a tech school as.
Sure.
A fully finished product, walking out the door.
Yeah.
To be able to either start their own business or work for someone else, which is a real commendable thought. But the question I have is, you might understand that you were getting involved with essentially an engineering prep program, too, or?
We do. We have an engineering technology program called Engineering Technology, we have Information Technology, and we also have Design and Visual Communication, which in the new facility would be in one area of the facility. We've had it, I have had our first graduating class a year ago.
And that would require like college, wouldn't it?
It would, it would.
And finally, just if you could indulge me here.
Sure.
I understand that there's a brick exterior, there's a cinder block interior, and that there's been some breach in the interface between the two. What would it have cost to repair the existing facility and say, upgrade the shops as part of that process?
Yeah, the School Building Committee looked at six different options for the facility. Obviously, now they came to the conclusion that new facility was the appropriate one. They looked at renovating the existing square footage, that was estimated at feasibility about $123 to $125 million, and then they looked at two reno additions, which at the time of feasibility was around $140, $142 million, and then they looked at three new construction options. The one with chosen was to the east side of the current facility, those were also in the $140 to $146 million range. Now, that was during feasibility. As you know, now, we're, with the new construction, we're down around $128, $128 million. So those were the different options that the School Building Committee was faced at the end of feasibility, when they chose between the six options that were presented, and so that cost was very similar for renovation versus new. Other criteria of the building committee, I don't know if I'm answering your question, I hope I am, the other criteria that they looked at, the School Building Committee, other than cost, because cost was quite, quite similar between renovation and new, was adherence to the educational plan and educational opportunities, the length of disruption to the educational process with renovation, and what's also kind of very unique to vocational technical education, it's hard to have a temporary auto tech shop, or a temporary marine service shop, and that, that became, those costs, those temporary type costs, which are not reimbursable by the MSBA, also served to drive up the cost of renovation. One big thing, well, one big thing, facade, you mentioned the facade, it's entirely brick, and there's been significant water infiltration over the years. The other aspect of that is behind that brick is backer board that's asbestos-containing material. So when, in a renovation, you not only would have to remedy that with students within the building, you also would have to abate and contain that during a renovation, which also drove, that's why renovation became, one of the reasons why renovation and new became almost the same cost.
Just one last question. How did you arrive at the estimate for retrofitting and repair? Was that done in-house, or were you?
We have a team, Owners Project Manager, which is Colliers International, and Drummy, Rosane, and Anderson, and they employed third-party consultants for much of the work. For example, with the brick, they did six test holes around, on different sides of the building to see what the status was behind the brick, and they've done similar things with the site, and then the interior of the facility. We've had so many consultants through that building during this process, and it's those consultants working on behalf of the design team that came to those, those figures I just shared with you.
Yeah, yes, about the only major thing that I have as a concern, and I said this when the committee was here.
Sure.
Is I'd love to get some sort of promise on the part of the school that the process itself is looked into and potentially altered, because right now, people who borrow have to actually pay, vote within a town to approve borrowing, but that doesn't align with.
Clarification, you're talking about the regional agreement.
Yeah, the regional agreement calls for an overt majority of the people who vote.
Correct.
Irrespective of individual town lines. Theoretically, you could wind up with two populous towns telling everybody else that they're on the hook for borrowing something, and I would love to have some promise publicly that you're going to at least look at that, try to fix that for the future.
That's the first time that's been suggested, but it's how our district was formed. That's the first time that's been suggested, but it's how our, our district was formed. It is, it's been a long process, and an exhaustive process, in getting to the October twenty-fourth vote. I don't know which way's better, quite frankly. You know, the other way is, is a unanimous consent from all twelve towns. That's sixteen D.
We're certainly not going to get there tonight. So let's, any more discussion on the building project, the support?
Just, Don asked proper questions, but just, my feedback is, you know, people really want the success of the Cape Cod Tech. They worry about the expense, and I think you've answered that with the comparison of the renovations. And the, and why it has to be, has to be done. And you're saying the building's falling apart, and the asbestos is a problem, but- Because that's what they, that's where I get my questions, is, okay, we need it, but why is it so expensive?
Yeah. If, if I had to pick the number one reason why it's so expensive, it's construction costs. Construction costs have, pardon the pun, have gone through the roof. And the MSBA only reimburses three hundred and twenty-six dollars a square foot. This construction cost is about four hundred and seventy-one, estimated. Four to five years ago, you could have built a facility for just over three hundred dollars a square foot construction. That is not the case now. And you need only go look in Boston at all those cranes you see as, as you go by the seaport, and as you get into the, into town. And it's those companies that can do a project of this size. So, the inflation on, on, in, in construction has had a significant impact on this project.
Bob, I support the project a hundred percent.
Thank you.
I was talking with a woman who works at the Ellen Jones Dental Clinic there.
Yes.
And she is not voting for it, because there's not going to be a clinic there anymore?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a big loss. That, I've just publicly, I'd like to say, that's a huge loss for us.
Yep.
But in going into the project, we did talk with Ellen, well, the, the director of the Ellen Jones Center downstairs, which is housed, gives low-income people in particular dental, access to dental care. And our students have the opportunity to go work li- on live patients with, with dentists. There are six chairs in that facility. It's going to be a big loss. I'd love to explore ways, not within the facility, because we didn't think, pay, using taxpayer dollars. We knew this would be an expensive project, and they didn't have the money to pitch in to, for the square footage that would be needed in the facility. So, we'd be open to a discussion on the property. We do have one small house, so you may, if you've driven on our property up to the right.
Yep.
We have shown it to them. Really, there's been no substantive conversations because of funding. But we'd like to explore that, because, not in the building, we, I do not envision that. But I'd love to have that stay on our property, or in close proximity to Cape Cod Tech, because it's been invaluable.
So, in actuality, in addition to that six thousand square feet that you said you were gaining, you're gaining that money, more square feet, where the Ellen Jones is right now. I don't know what that square footage is, but-
Definitely. I want to, I want to ballpark that at about twenty-five hundred square feet. But most of that's going to our dental assisting program, if you're doing a plus minus, because there's, the, that is the worst technical area at four hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's, it's, and we could, we could accommodate more students if, if we had an appropriate facility for the kids.
Great. Thanks.
Been moved and seconded to pledge our support for the Cape Cod Tech High School Building Project. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, back up to the top. Proposed wireless communications lease RFP for property located at one ninety-six Chatham Road. Dan Palatier, Water Superintendent.
Good evening. How are y'all doing? Just wanted to come before you. I've been working with a site acquisition specialist for one of the major cell providers. For those of you who don't know, Larry may remember, back in two thousand and thirteen, the Water Department in town entered into an agreement with AT&amp;T. We were receiving around thirty thousand dollars a year, which we were splitting between General Fund and Water Enterprise, for a site located at one ninety-six Chatham Road. Back in two thousand and sixteen, fifteen, they terminated their lease agreement. They paid us, they bought us out for a year. And here I am before you, hoping that we can enter into another agreement and get some revenue, instead of spend money.
Thank you, Dan.
I guess at this point, I've invested a decent amount of time, just kind of ironing things out with the site acquisition specialist. The Board of Selectmen is the name on the deed. So, I know we were splitting the revenue before. I would propose that we move forward in that fashion. And I have the original lease agreement, and I spoke with legal briefly. It would be my intention to update all that information, all the figures, bring it back to the board, as well as the Water Commission. Have everybody set eyes on it, bless it, put out an RFP. One of the things that the agreement does specify, that we do need to have town meeting authorization. So, I would like to do all of this now, so that in the spring, we could pull the trigger.
So, to get to your next step, you basically need us to say that we're interested?
Yes.
Chris, do you have anything on this you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, I think where, you know, it's town, town selectmen's property, and having the arrangement to split it fifty-fifty, you know, I think it makes sense. I, I think I was actually down where they were exploring this, and it didn't, it didn't have viability, so the site, people walked away. So if there is some viability now, it certainly makes sense. It was a market decision not to proceed, I think, in fifteen is when I was down there. So, it wasn't something within the town's control. It was really in the marketplace.
AT&amp;T went through budgetary realignments, and they said, and they dropped the site. So, but Verizon has reached out and said, hey, we're interested. I think the site may change a little bit. What I'm going to do on my end is do, lay out my Zone Ones for all of my wells. And pretty much lay out a map and say, this is where you cannot go, and see where people would like to go, and kind of go from there.
So, Dan, there'll be another opportunity to talk about splits, or what percentage the Water Department gets, the board gets.
Yeah.
And whatever deal we make out. Right now, you just need us to go along with the RFP.
That, that, yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Want to vote on this, or do we want to? We need consensus.
I think if it's a consensus of the board that they're, you know, you're willing to continue to explore this, and have an RFP prepared, and, and just, you know, brought back, then I think that's probably appropriate at this stage.
Okay. Question, first question, Janelle?
I just have a question about, and I, and I don't mean this disrespectfully at all, but why is it split fifty-fifty if the, if it's not Water Department land?
I would say because we are the stewards of the property, one. Two, the last time we went through this, the Water Department was processing all of the payments, and then we would disburse the funds, the general fund. When someone needs to come out and get into that site, we're the ones on the property. We're the ones who blow the road.
And so, does it, does it abut the Water Department?
It's on, it's on our property, yes.
It's on the property. Okay.
And I, the, I still haven't clearly been able to determine exactly how the, who, the ownership of the land goes. Because back in thirteen, the, the town meeting article read extremely confusing, as they typically do. But it was voting to authorize the selectman to lease a portion of property located at one ninety-six Chatham Road. That, it, it goes back and forth between selectmen and water, and selectmen and water, and I really haven't been able to decipher which one's which, but-
Don, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan, just, this has nothing to do with the split on our side, but it does have something to do with before you go out to ask for stuff. I kind of have strong feelings that if you're using municipal land, that there should be some sort of an opportunity for more than just that one carry-
Yeah, so-
So, are we, were you talking about subpositions that would be sublet out?
Yeah, so, the original lease agreement was, it was a thirty thousand dollars a year, with a three percent increase per year. As well as, we would get twenty-five percent of any rent that the owner rented to another company.
Is there an obligation, though, for them to sublet?
Yes, in the lease, yes. It says it there to do their due diligence and-
Fine.
So, yeah.
Julie?
So, I, I have a couple of questions, in the sense that I think that it should not only benefit in terms of other companies, but, based on what we're facing in wastewater, is there any way to have certain, you know, and the enterprise fund, or whatever way, to, to earmark some of those monies? Because it's newfound money, per se, and it would be great to offset some of those costs. Is that possible?
Yeah, I think anything's possible. I mean, there's a little bit of history. I don't know if Larry may have been on the board at the time, but one of these agreements, they had a cell tower, and the decision made that the fifty percent for the town was to go into funding the housing, affordable housing. So, I, I think that, you know, that opportunity exists. And I, I do think, just, it's like on the R-U-utility polls, that, you know, National Grid, or, not National Grid, Eversource owns the poll, but then everyone else kind of piggybacks on it. And these cell towers are not too dissimilar, where one company will construct it, and then if there's opportunity to lease out the other components, they will. So you only need one to, to build it. So, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, and, you know, certainly, the, the sharing arrangement can be thought out. And I think for the selectmen, it, it is new revenue, and if you want to earmark it for a specific purpose, it's certainly within your, within your realm to do so.
Chris, if they sublet the, the cell tower, if Sabre Horizon sublets it to T-Mobile, or whatever, do we get a portion of that as well? Okay.
And that would be in the RFP, that that would be mandatory, that we would get a, a, a part of that.
Yeah, it's the, the one that was issued in two thousand and thirteen was, I think, sixty-something pages. At least that's what it was in my PDF. Larry signed it, so-
Julie, you had another question?
I was going to read.
Do you have another question?
No, that's all.
Larry?
I just commented, it's not actually new money, because that, that lease is going now. We're trying to extend it on.
No, they had canceled a couple of years ago.
I know, but we were getting it before they canceled, so it's going, you know.
So now, it's new. It's new again. It's new again.
It's new again, new equipment, so.
I have no question.
Dan, I certainly applaud your efforts, bringing another project forward to, to raise revenue. And I, I just hope that, in the end of this one, we can come to a lot clearer understanding than we did on the solar field at the dump, and who gets what. And what it's going to be used for, and really to benefit the taxpayers, not-
There are provisions in there, too. I know we're installing radios on, but there are provisions that we can install pretty much anything that we want, as well, on the site, so.
Thank you. No one on the board's opposed to him? All set? Consensus?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Robin. Request from Cemetery Commission to name the pet burial ground the Christine Wood Memorial, Memory Garden.
Yes. So, I just want to give a little brief history on Christine, if I may. Christine passed away in two thousand and twelve, and she was a member of my Cemetery Commission. She died at the age of ninety-one. Christine was well-known and appreciated for being an active volunteer in Howich. And in two thousand and ten, she was the recipient of the Community Service Award of the Year for appreciation for being the past chair and member of the Howich Council on Aging. She served on the town's three hundred anniversary committee. She was on the Brooks Academy Commission, the Housing Commission, the Howich Center Initiative Group, the Howich Historicals Commission, the Howich Family Pantry, and also on the Howich Cemetery Commission. What a lot of people who didn't know Christine is, is if you were lucky enough to be one of her friends, as well as being on these committees, was her, was her love of animals. If you ever went over to her house, you'd have to step over your, her animals to get in. And she would feed not only her animals, but all the animals in the neighborhood. So she had, was feeding the squirrels, and feeding the birds. And when we were trying to come up with who we would name the new pet burial grounds after, Christine's name was overwhelmingly received by our whole group. So, at our meeting, we all came up with, we're in a complete agreement that it would be named after Christine. I have spoken to Christine's son-in-law, and the granddaughter. Christine's daughter, Lynn, passed away a year after Christine passed away. So, I got in touch with her granddaughter, who was elated that we would name this after her grandmother. And I received a phone call from her, her son-in-law, who also would like to dedicate benches in the name of Lynn, his, Christine's daughter's memory as well. So, I think so many people are in support of this being named after Christine, and I hope that you guys all approve.
Thank you, Robin. Don?
I got a secret that not even Robin knows. For twenty years, we had the same phone number, except one was four-three-oh, and one was four-three-two, and I had a daughter named Chris. So, there were a number of young men who used to call Christine, you know, and she said, I'm pretty certain you want the other number. She was a lovely human being, and just, and I can't think of a more fitting thing than to name this after her, she would just love this.
Yeah, she would. Thank you, Don.
Janelle?
I don't have anything. Thanks, Robin.
Julie?
I don't have anything.
No.
Larry? How many cemeteries in town are named after a person? I guess I'm going to go the other way. I, I certainly applaud-
Yeah.
Everything Christine's done for the town. Obviously, a very long list, and, and she's owed a debt of gratitude. How many cemeteries have we named after people in town?
None.
And how many pet cemeteries are there on the Cape?
None.
And this is, so the first on the Cape, and, and it would seem to me that a more fitting name would be the Howich Pet Cemetery, since it's being paid for by all of the taxpayers.
It's actually not a cemetery. It's a burial grounds, but it's going to be a walking park as well.
Now, you know, in my, my own sense here, is maybe name the gazebo after, or a section of it, or benches, but I, I, I'm not sure that I want to get into the practice of naming the memorial, new memorial garden, pet cemetery, whatever we're going to call it, after a person. So.
Well, that being said, I was a little bit confused. I thought it was going to be a memorial garden at the, at the pet cemetery. So, that's not, okay.
Okay. So, when I went, did a lot of research on the pet burial grounds that I was looking at, most of them were named after somebody. This is going to be the first pet burial grounds, a municipal one, in the state of Massachusetts. So, of course, I went to surrounding states to see how they did it, and a lot of them named after people in their community that they admired. So, that is why we went down this road.
The only thing I would say is, so say it's on a map, and it says Christine Wood Memory Garden. And you're from out of town, or you, you heard through the grapevine, oh, we have a pet cemetery, let's go find it. And you don't know that it's that name, like, shouldn't there somewhere be that it is a pet cemetery, or pet burial ground?
Yeah, you can't have cemetery in the word.
You can't have cemetery?
No. Cemetery is for hu- for human remains only.
Okay.
So, you can't have cemetery in the name.
And, okay. Even though we, that's what we were calling it for years. Okay, so, pet burial ground.
Correct.
Is that going to be in the name? Or are you just wanting it to be Christine Wood Memory Garden?
Yes.
And that's the sign that's on Queen Anne Road?
Yes.
I see. Did you know that, Julie?
No, I didn't understand that.
I, you know, I, I would say it's part of the formality of this. I mean, you guys voted at the commission meeting to do it. It really was, you should have maybe made a recommendation to us. I think it's already kind of been perceived, at least in the packet, that this decision was made by the Cemetery Commission. And again, you know, she did a lot of wonderful things for this town. She's a wonderful person. You know, we have people in town, Jimmy Marsaline, for instance. I mean, what are we going to name after Jimmy? I mean, Howich Center? I mean, it's, it, I'm not sure that this is really the practice that the board should be getting into. That'll reflect in my vote. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I don't know. I'm confused now. Can I, can I ask a question?
Julie, go ahead.
So, to Janelle's question about whether or not a, a section, or to the chairman's question about the gazebo, or whatever, are you, is the committee not willing to do something along those lines, where-
Well, the, the commission is not here with me tonight, so I really can't speak for them.
Okay.
So.
So I guess my question would be, would it be best to go back and ask if they would be willing to call it the Howich Pet Cemetery with having it?
Burial ground.
Burial ground, sorry.
Certainly, yes, but I think the first, the first real decision here is, do we want to accept their request, or deny their request, and ask them to come back? That's, you know, that's the tough choice. And again, you know, this is clearly somebody that's very well-respected, and clearly some, you know, the families are excited about this. But, again, this is a new ask, and this is something that I'm not willing to set the precedence on this.
Go ahead.
Don?
I will point out that we've named both sections of the public safety facility after someone, so it's not the first time we've ever named anything after somebody. And Brooks Academy, I believe, was named after Brooks. So, it's, it's not, just think ahead for when, when you may pass on.
You're going to start debating histories?
No, no, I'm just saying that there is, there is a sample history of this. Maybe clarifying that it's the Christine Wood Memorial, Memory Pet Garden, but I, I don't see anything wrong with it. I just don't.
I ju- I think maybe it needs to have the word pet burial ground in the title. Whether it's the Christine Wood Pet Burial Ground, or Christine Wood Memorial Pet Burial Ground. Because, again, I think Christine Wood Memory Garden doesn't say what that piece of property is. That's my only thing.
Okay.
So I would ask that maybe you just bring that information back to the commission- So I would ask that maybe you just bring that information back to the commission and then maybe clarify, maybe give us a couple of ideas with the word pet burial, words, pet burial ground in it, just so it defines what that piece of property is.
Sure.
Because we're not calling the police station Rainio, Rainio Building, right? We still call it the police station. Whether it's named after him or not, it's still the police station.
So is it the consensus of the board, we wanted to go back or do we want to take a motion on this?
Go back.
Go back.
Go back.
Yeah.
Just, okay. Thanks, Robin.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay. Reconsideration of FY eighteen disposal area fees. Link?
Hi again. I'm before you this evening requesting your consideration in adjusting our C and D disposal fees. As you may recall, last May, I was before you. I made a recommendation that I wrote in April to raise our C and D price to match market conditions and raise that to a hundred and forty dollars a ton. We did that to march, to match what at the time were market conditions. The town of Yarmouth is our main competitor for C and D. The town of Yarmouth subsequently, um, in June, made a decision to raise their C and D rate by five dollars. I have never been before the board, um, asking for a midterm increase. I am standing here this evening seeking that for a couple of reasons. One, your budget message clearly said, look at revenue and find, and find out ways to maximize revenue. I had some interaction with a board member that was specific about disposal area and another way to ro, raise revenue. So it just kind of percolated to the top. Then I wrote my memo to you last week. Then today I get notification from NER, one of the processors who we take our C and D, uh, to in Taunton, that they were increasing by ten dollars per ton. I got on the horn with them and said, are we exempt from this? What's the scoop? And he said, we're going to be going up by five dollars per ton, um, effective next week. So the five dollars per ton is primarily to match market conditions. There's really only, well, five, five places that I know of that you can get rid of, uh, C and D material, construction demolition material, um, reasonably well. Most, most all the towns accept it, but they have rates of like two hundred dollars a ton or more. We have the town of Yarmouth, as I mentioned. You have S and J Esco right down on, uh, Great Western Road. And you've got Paul Daniels in Orleans that accept it. And we're all priced about the same. They're all about one forty-five, um, right now. In numbers, that means about forty-five thousand. We're doing a little more than nine thousand tons of C and D business. I believe attached to my memo, I provided you a graph of the last four years that showed how much the businesses escalated over the course of the last four years. And that's because the avenues to dispose of this material are becoming increasingly more difficult. I mean, if you're not, one of the places I just mentioned, you really have to drive down to, to Bourne, to dispose of it, if, if you're a, a commercial type person. And, and most of this is all, um, you know, commercial driven. There are some homeowners that have small projects that come in, but by and large, it is all commercial. And, um, like I said, if you take action on this this evening, that, that five dollars per ton to match what Yarmouth did, um, would raise about forty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue. One last thing, I'd like to say that the, I do touch base, um, when I rate my, my annual recommendation to you with our counterparts. I reach out and do a research and, um, I did talk to my counterpart in Yarmouth that ti, that time. And he said, well, we're considering it, but we haven't pulled the trigger yet. He also shared with me that his Board of Selectmen voted, um, to give him the autonomy, a twenty-dollar window to adjust, um, that price based on market conditions. He got surprised by a contractual increase, much like I found on my desk today. Um, and they did so on July one.
Thank you, Link. And thank you for bringing this forward. Just to be clear at this point, though, what we originally thought would be forty-five thousand and potential additional revenue is now going to be break even if we pass this.
Mr. Chair, that's half true. You may recall that, um, ABC, who we've got two contracts with for MSW and C and D, about a year ago or, or law, probably almost two years ago now, went into bankruptcy. He was sent out of bankruptcy. At that juncture, I met with the town administrator and said, we can't take a chance that this guy's going to be out of business the next day or something. And we found some different avenues to take the material too. This is a, a major con, the, the, it's a major contractor, NER, um, in Taunton. They run a great facility. We take about half our business to them. We take about half our business, business to New Bedford Waste, of which we have a contract for, I think, seventy-three dollars a ton currently. The next question would be, why don't we take all of it to New Bedford Waste? They simply can't handle it. We're allowed one, one trailer a day to that, to them, uh, with C and D and whatever access goes to NER.
So we will be more competitive with our neighboring people that take C and D and will raise about half of what we originally projected in additional revenue.
Completely accurate.
Chris?
I, I do think, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Link and I had this discussion about Yarmouth. And, you know, it's interesting to me that we asked the board to raise the rate in Aug, in, uh, April. The, uh, Yarmouth adjusted theirs in May. We just got notice the other day of an adjustment. So I think doing that Yarmouth model of, of giving, you know, I, I'm perfectly content to have, you know, Link have that authority to have some kind of range. Because I think if our, if our budget target is, you know, to try to get forty-seven thousand, then, and we find out it goes up five dollars, we can come back in three weeks and ask you guys to increase it five dollars or just give, you know, him some flexibility, uh, to be able to do that. I did say to him, and he, he's pointing the finger at me, that, you know, if you want to have it through the administrator, I'm fine doing that too. I just think that, um, having the flexibility to be able to respond to market conditions within a scope, I, I think does make some merit. But I think he should come back with a more formal recommendation to that end.
Right. And when would, when would you do your rates? When do we do your rates traditionally? July?
Ju, July one on the fiscal year.
So this one tonight could be voted as this and then we could take up the, uh, spread later.
Why wouldn't we just do it now?
Why would we if we don't have to?
Because next week, like he said, it's since the, uh, NER raised it.
I think to Chris's point, if he came back with a more, with a, with a proposal on it and what, what we're actually looking for and we had something to look at and the public would have something to look at, it would be more appropriate.
Yeah, because we specifically said one forty-five. So to authorize above that is inconsistent with the information.
We have no knowledge of the public of doing anything other than what we're talking about.
We can come back with that.
Larry?
I can go along with that. I'd also like to have some timeframe in that as well. Because you don't want to be so variable that no one understands what our rates are. So whether it's once a quarter or some, some timeframe when the discussion comes back.
Julie?
Yeah, well, I was, you know, when I read through this and, and I certainly know that, uh, you know, the dump is used, uh, the commercial piece of it is used, um, quite a bit. I, my feeling on it was before you even came in with the newest information, was to go up by ten.
Yeah.
You know, I thought ten. So now my inclination is to say at least fifteen. So then my inclination is to certainly be in favor of being able to adjust and have Link or yourself be able to do that. Because why should we miss out on that opportunity? And it's a convenience you're offering, you know, the various town, you know, contractors. So I'm in favor of that. And I, I would be in favor of us going automatically to fifteen initially.
Link, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, um, when I made my recommendation to you, and I believe I was before you in May, although I wrote the correspondence in April, um, I said that our business, I had been off target the last few years and we've had to supplement the disposal area budget due to increases in business that I, I didn't foresee. I was hopeful that a ten dollar, uh, increase in C and D would maybe drive some of it somewhere else. Trade to the con, contrary, I ran the numbers fiscal year to date as of yesterday. And, uh, we had done twenty-five hundred and, uh, two thousand five hundred and seventy-two tons, which is a hundred and thirty tons more than the same period last year. Now, that is variable. It could, that could simply be somebody's tearing down a house or one more remodel or something like that. But the rate increases that you voted in July had absolutely no bearing on our tonnages. It hasn't been affected one iota. And if you were simply focusing on, on market conditions, I, I believe that Ms. Kavanaugh is absolutely right, that I would keep toying with the rate until we saw some decline in business. But then from the other thing, we are, we offer a service. Now, there are alternatives to this service. So people can go elsewhere, um, for it. So I have very mixed feelings on, uh, on that. If you were looking to maximize revenue, I think a ten dollar increase wouldn't raise an eyebrow, um, as far as what the tonnages are. Because people come to us because we're quick, convenient and quick.
Open seven days.
And open seven days a week.
I'm with you on the town.
Chris, as a formality, does this have to have a public hearing because it's a rate increase?
I think we actually do.
So we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back for a, um, for a public hearing. Now, the request before us is for five dollars and it was for a specific reason. Now we're, now I'm hearing you guys want to alter the.
Mm-hmm.
I love that. I love what we are. Tax them.
It's not a tax.
It is a tax.
No.
So.
It's not a tax.
Okay. We'll call it a fee.
It's a fee.
Well, keep in mind, this is for the residents of the town of Howich as well. And, and also keep in mind that, that Link has done a great job providing us with information that shows that he's more than covering his costs with the C and D. So it's not a profit center. Link, do you want to just speak to what we spoke about before we put this on the agenda?
We're in a full cost recovery model.
Thank you.
That's what you mean. We, I, in round.
Let's, Don, go ahead.
Back to you, Mr. Chair. That was exactly where I was going to go. Much as I would love to be able to generate revenue in these areas, fees as opposed to penalties like tickets or something, fees are supposed to be tethered to the cost of doing the business, uh, by state law. So I don't know what that answer is, but I, you're not supposed to be pushing it so that you can make a profit margin off of it. I don't know what the cost is, but wherever that is, we're not supposed to be.
Chris?
It isn't a profit center. You're absolutely right.
I, I think that it's the Emerson College case. We're supposed to be adhering to that. And I think Link does a, a great job. I, I think in this circumstance, we do have a denominator, if you would. And we have put so much money in the budget, we try to guess how much the tonnage is going to be. So if we start going over, then I think last year it was a hundred and sixty thousand. We had to go back and, and supplement his budget. So we don't want to be out of whack.
Right.
I think we do need to be able to be responsive to market conditions. And I think, Mr. Chairman, at least from my perspective, this isn't about gouging people. This is about making sure that we have a target range where we're consistent with the marketplace. So we don't get, we're too low and getting too much or too high and, and not getting enough. So that, at least from my perspective, it's about how do we keep it honest as the system?
Julie?
That's exactly my point, is to not raise it so that we're trying to, you know, make this a huge profit. But if we're, if we're constantly getting in more than we even could predict, then it's costing us more to get rid of it. Overall, we don't want to be in that position where we could have had the money covering the cost and we're still providing a service. And overall, I understand that, you know, there are, there are people within our taxpayers using it for commercial purposes. I, I get that. But ultimately, it's really the larger loads that are costing us the most money. And a lot of that is larger contractors. So I, I just think that if we're going to be looking at trying to pare everything down so that we're providing a decent budget, hard figures, I first of all agree with letting, you know, Link or Chris have the availability of making those adjustments. But I think that if we were looking for five, we've already heard that we need ten. I, I would even say that we need fifteen because we don't know what's going to happen ultimately further down the road. The, the cost of getting rid of trash continues to go up. So that's my.
I'll just point out, this is a reaction to the cost going up. And this is to put us in line with our two competitors. So now we've now taken a very simple request and we've way overcomplicated. And we're adding now to what the department head is coming before us for. So this was a request based on a budget message that he read to put us in line with the other competitors. Why do we want to consider going beyond the other competitors for the maybe that we had last year?
No, I think that he.
Julie, go ahead first.
So I, I think that ultimately my reaction to what, what I'm, what I read and what I'm hearing tonight is we were looking for five. But now he's just learned today that there's another five dollar increase in the cost. So there's ten. So we at least need ten.
So you want to go beyond what Dennis is doing and the other town that's around it? You want to go beyond that?
I do.
Okay. Janelle?
Um, Link, do you happen to know if the other towns also use NER? Or if Paul Daniels?
Excuse me.
Uh, the town of Yarmouth has a contract with NER to haul and dispose of their material. We do our own hauling. All solid waste and recycling activities are exempt from thirty B. So their, their bid law are exempt. They're exempt for a specific per, purpose because of market conditions, because so much of this is market driven. Yarmouth reacted to a new contract that they had. NER is a, is a, uh, if you've ever in Taunton, I'd say go buy that facility. I mean, for what they do, they are spotless. You could literally eat off the dumping floor. I mean, they really run a great operation. I am not exaggerating here.
No, thanks.
Not from forty-four. You know, we, we asked a, a question. Every year I, I, um, a, a question was posed by Mr. Howell. I provide a full cost, uh, accounting analysis of disposal area stickers. I break that, all the costs, and I do mean all the costs. Salarium wages, salaries allocated from other, uh, DPW employees, employee fringe benefits. I put in everything here but the kitchen sink in this analysis. And I break the whole thing into costs that, uh, the disposal area sticker or permit for residence purchase. And then everything else I call commercial. Add it all up. And I head down here and I wrote this on, uh, four seven, uh, four seventeen seventeen. It's two point six four million dollars. We turned in two point seven five million dollars. I think that's about as close as one can come to being a break even operation, um, as, as there is. Now, are there things we have more of a margin on than others? Yes. C and D is a very lucrative business that if you want to look at it in its totality, offsets the cost of other things at the disposal area.
So the reason I was asking about NER, um, if Yarmouth or any of the others, uh, have a contract with them because they're going, maybe they're going to raise their rates next week or the week after. So then we are going to be on par with them if we were to do a ten dollar increase. What's that one?
Okay, this is in our, uh, NER's, uh, notice. First of all, we'd like to apologize for the short notice, but we have to increase our disposal rates. We have absorbed the high cost of disposal for some time now and cannot, um, see to, uh, and need to address it now. Therefore, we are forced to pass along some of the costs to our customers. And they get into some more specific reasons. And really, the, it's the outlets for the ultimate materials are dwindling.
What is that pink paper?
Oh, this was just a notice that they mailed out with it. Effective October twenty-third, due to the cost of disposal, your rate will increase ten dollars. We apologize.
Oh.
Chris?
Chairman, I do think to your point, uh, generally we put these in the paper. We have a public hearing that says what the rate's going to be. I, I think what we were just trying to do tonight is, at least from my perspective, we had a rate adjustment for a neighboring town in May that after we set the rate, it, we had an adjustment. We've had another adjustment and it's in October. And that there is some volatility. And we're just giving the board an option to address that volatility by having a range. Quite honestly, that range could go up or go down depending upon the market conditions. But I think that Lincoln, uh, probably should put together a more formal, uh, proposal to give that rate, uh, flexibility if the board so did, so decides. And, and I'm perfectly content, you know, and we're not talking about, you know, the sky's the limit. If you want to do ten buck, you know, ten dollars high or ten dollars low, that should get us through a, a year cycle without us losing or gaining, uh, too much, uh, customer base. But I, I do think we need to do a formal recommendation and, and have it be, uh, posted so we can get it on formally for that adjustment.
Link?
I wait as long as possible to make my recommendation to you for fees to be as close to market conditions. We've done so pretty, pretty effectively. This is the first time I've been before the board asking for a midterm adjustment. Our rates have been fairly predictable and fairly, and fairly steady. In this instance, it was just a combination of reading your budget message along with the town of Yarmouth taking action that I had, um, after I had already committed, uh, my recommendation to you. So, and I threw in there, uh, about the Yarmouth, uh, giving the DPW director the autonomy to. So, and I threw in there about the Yarmouth, giving the DPW director the autonomy to explain what happened, not necessarily that I was seeking that autonomy from you. I think we, you know, I, I just think the $5 right now, we, we, we're leaving money on the table, and your budget message was clear.
Thank you, Lincoln. Thank you for the presentation. I'll talk to Chris tomorrow about getting this on in a form that we can have a public hearing, and the board members can chime in on what they think the rate should be. Well, Seth, thank you, Link. New open meeting law update, so D. So this is a result of, somebody in the community gave me the AG's office revision September 25th, 2017, which they had a class on last week or two weeks ago in Mashpee. And really, I put this on there, one was to put the information in the packet for the general public to know what open meeting law changes there were, what revisions there were. But second, to, to ask administration, who's responsible for this information flow and the training? Obviously, this has to flow to every committee, every board, and is it the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to get this forward, or is there somebody in Town Hall who's responsible?
I, I think normally, Mr. Chairman, you have in here too, the bid procedures. What I try to do is, when we have a change like this, I will put it on for department heads meeting. We'll ask the individual department heads that, you know, have interaction with the board to distribute it. And then we will usually distribute it electronically throughout the organization when there's a, a legal update or this, this educational information. So that's how we try to get that information out to the organization. Certainly, I, I don't think I even put a cover letter with it. I usually just have the material and just distribute it. But, you know, where the board has liaisons to individual boards and committees, if you wanted to have a cover letter that says, you know, this is the latest information. You know, the law is constantly evolving, so I think it is important to just let people know and to keep them up to date. So it's really the board's pleasure. We can certainly distribute it. So I think that the revised thing, it's just, I think it was October 5th, I think is what I read. So certainly, it's appropriate to get that, October 6th. It's certainly appropriate now to start to distribute that open meeting law information.
Thank you. Comments, Don? Well, Seth? Janelle?
I, I think it's important for us as liaisons to even electronically share this information with the chair of every committee that we are the liaison to. And then also, we have been talking about having an open meeting law presentation?
Yep, we can do another one.
Okay. And then invite all the volunteers as well?
Yeah, we, last time we televised, so certainly we can televise it again. So it is available to folks, but that was the old version, so we do need a new version because the law tweaks and changes as we go.
Okay. You'll schedule that, Chris, and let us know?
Yep, we can schedule that.
Thank you. Larry, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, in terms of the cover letter, there's a bit of a cover letter, letter here, but I'd like to see a shorter version with some key doubt points in there that I think while we threw it, probably will have most effect on our committees. And one is the, they've changed the remote access, made that easier. I think, I don't recall exactly, but I think they've done a much better job of, of defining when minutes have to be done. You know, 30 days or three meetings, and we always struggle somewhat getting meetings out on time. There's probably a couple more, I think, key items, four, five, six. I'd like to see that in a cover letter to the, to the committees.
So you're volunteering to put that together for Chris?
That's what I was hoping you would say, Mr. Chairman.
I'll work with Chris to put it together.
Thank you.
Because I think if, we should have, because that'd give us also talking points when we go back to our committees as well. Because you read through this, and I mean, I'm sure it's really important.
I think to your point...
I didn't say that right.
To your point though, Larry, in the...
But I'm trying to get to high points.
In the material here, it says that there's no revision to certain sections, and they do have three pages that highlight what the changes are.
Right. But you want to read those, or some of those that...
You want to highlight the highlights?
I see it's more important than others.
Okay.
As, in our, in the way we operate.
The committees, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, particularly.
We can, we can certainly do that, highlight those elements.
Well, Seth? Thank you. Next up is tax collection policy and procedure. So in the packet tonight, you have what is our goal, goal number one, objective number two, I think, or goal number one, objective C number two. So it's the tax collection policy and procedure. I put this on there, Chris, kind of as an update as to where we are with this. So the last time we talked about this, I believe, was June 5th. So May 30th and June 5th were the minutes that I could find when, when the board expressed its concern about selling the tax liens. So I kind of want to know where we're at with it, I guess.
Yeah, we haven't made as much progress as, as I would like. We have had a couple meetings. I know Amy's in the room, the tax collector. We have had a couple meetings, and one of the things that we found out from that list that we provided is that there are a fair amount of errors. And are we taxing the same property to two different owners? Are we taxing two different owners', you know, property that they don't own? And we are trying to work through some of the elements on the list, so that way we have a better quality list to work from. And I wasn't aware of that, quite honestly, Mr. Chairman, until we started to dig into the weeds on, on some of these taxes. So one of the things is, we don't want to go out and certainly sell liens on properties that we're not sure on. So I, I think that we need to kind of vet through and, and make sure. And I think, as I've indicated, you know, this, this is something that some of these, some of these errors go back 10, 15 years. I mean, it's not stuff that's super obvious. So I think, I appreciate your efforts, Mr. Chairman. I know you, I think, went out to East Hampton and, and met with a firm about different approaches to take, and I think we had owed you, and we had not delivered yet, but scheduling maybe a Skype session and going through that process that, that that firm offers. We have engaged another firm already that just does title search to look at some of the problems that we believe we have with property owners who have claimed that they own property, and we claim that it's, or at least tax wise, tax records wise, that it's unknown, owner's unknown. So we need to go through that list. We need to identify those, and, and we need to clean up as we go. But it, it's going to be a little bit longer of a process than I had, I had hoped to wish.
So, thank you, Chris, for the explanation. Can we, I mean, you, you mentioned again, selling the tax liens, and I know this board was fairly clear about it not wanting to sell the tax liens. And I know that's not our decision to make, but what about, what about properties that we know aren't mistakes? So, you know, we had a fire on 124, and we demoed that house, and that one hasn't been paid, and Down Road, there was a fire on that one, and that one hasn't been paid. What about the ones that we do know and exploring or going out for requests for information from firms like this one that I talked to, besides just the one that we have inside already? And doing, approaching these ourselves, collecting on these? The way that I read it is, 16% interest goes to the town, legal fees goes to the town. If the property get auctioned, we get our fees back, and we get the difference. So why aren't we starting? It seems like we're, other than maybe putting some money upfront, it seems like the collection process, other than starting it, is at no loss at all to the town. Is there a reason why we're not starting it, at least, Chris?
I, I think it's just, you know, quite honestly, I'll find time with Amy to go through, and, and all what I'm asking for is, I think we just need, and, and we do all this, that if we can bring, you know, 10 or 15 at a time and make sure that we vet through those for those that will be going to auction. I just want to make sure that we don't compound a mistake. And, and that's really the concern, is that there may be some mistakes, and we want to find those ones, Mr. Chairman, that are clearly obvious as to who the owner is.
So when you say auction, is that town-induced auction, or are we still talking about selling the tax liens?
I'm, I'm willing to explore either way, whichever is most cost effective. I, I don't have a preference either way. I just want to, we need to identify and get a taxpayer that's going to pay us. Because one thing's for certain, we have too many that we have outstanding, and we need to shorten that list.
Okay. I just want to get my point across clear. It, it seems to me that a benefit to the town is the town dealing with it, not selling to a third party.
Yeah.
That's something that I think this whole board has been adamant about, and we really want to, I want to at least keep that in the forefront. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of my areas of greatest interest, and it was expressed back when we had this discussion initially, the owner, the properties that are trusts, where somebody passes away, and it's likely that because of them passing away, the means for communicating to the trust, whether that's the P.O. box or the phone number, probably switched. And they switched in some relatives who became trustees, but nonetheless, the trust exists. And that would be, became a very popular mechanism to pass property along without going through probate or anything. I'm really concerned that that would be like one of our first priorities, because I, I really don't like the idea of any of the trustees hiding behind the fact that, well, mom or dad's not here anymore, and we don't have to pay anything, we're renting the house out. And I did stumble across at least one of those that, that exists, so it seems like it shouldn't be too difficult to start with that.
Well, any ones that you stumble across, give to Chris at the top of the list.
Yeah, let me know, whatever we can do to shorten the list.
Yeah, because I think we all have a sense of urgency, that we want to move ahead.
Julie?
Yeah, I, I don't, is there a way that, I mean, in terms of the state, where we can access the corporate database? I don't know if there's any way to access the...
Registry.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of that is done already as part of our internal process.
All right, okay.
So these aren't ones that are, are simple.
So then, you know, as I agree, that it's obviously a priority, and the sooner the better, and I agree to keep it in-house. But we also talked about creating a priority list in terms of, you know, looking at eminent domain, thinking that was a cleaner way to take it, so it'd be nice to compile that list as well.
Yeah, I, I do think that this hasn't been ignored. One of the things we've done is, we, we looked at the Judah Eldredge property. That's one that we know that it's probably going to be an issue. We, we do have a, a title search looking at that, just to kind of verify what we already know. And that is about $400,000 worth of back taxes. That's almost 10% by itself of, of our issue, maybe not 10%, 7 to, 7%. So we are looking at some of those, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you've expressed that there are some that may be for housing trust purposes. So if there are specific ones, I just need to sit down with Amy. We need to generate that list of the approach we're going to take on each one. And those ones that we know where there is another municipal use for housing, we certainly want to prioritize those.
No, I think for the rest of the residents in town, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of people obviously wanted, once that hit the papers, wanted to collect that money. So I, you know, my sense is if we hire an attorney, or, or we go through at least looking at attorneys like this Bluman Associates that I put in front of you, Beres, Berenson, and Bloom, if we look at that, at least we can start them on five properties that we know. I mean, Amy, Amy was very adamant that she had a list of properties that she knew nobody was living there, or that she knew that were past offenders. So I'd like to just start, if we could get to that point and have somebody in-house that starts working on those, I think we, it'd be a great place to start. Thank you. All right, next up is the discussion on the state bid process and procurement. We talked about this last week. Chris, thank you for the memo. This, generally, I'm going to try and keep my comments to one page. I did a tremendous amount of reading, and this came about because we had a contract before us last week that I pulled out of the consent agenda, had time to review and found some flaws in the contract. Chris and I had a conversation about it. The day after the meeting, we had a conversation with the department head and the people in the department that had put it together. They revised the process, they sent, and now it's being sent back out to bid. Chris, I think you did a good job pointing out in here what we do, what we are doing. But I also think, you know, you, you put in here that the, you know, town, town engineer, although not having necessary designation, to me, that's a big deal. And, and I guess that, I'll start my questions with, who in town, who in town can do procurement? How many people from the town attended the free procurement training that the county offered in September? So who, who, who in town can do procurement right now legally?
Yeah, legally, you don't have to have the, the certification to do procurement. So legally, by, by the charter, I'm, I'm named as the chief procurement officer, so I can do procurement. Not every town has somebody that's received the training. I, just for good faith, I mean, to me, how do you do something and not be certified when the certified program is offered? So I've gone through that process. I've been certified six or seven years, I think, at, at this stage. And I know Carolyn Carey also has gone out and got the approval. When I started here, the town engineer, Bob Cafarelli, has been the person that has been doing that. I think Bob is diligent. The fact that he doesn't have the certification doesn't make it inappropriate. I think he calls enough, and, and he gets enough information that he probably keeps himself as current as he can.
So the, you put in the memo considerable, considerable opportunity for improvement. Can you just elaborate on that?
Sure. Just as a follow-up, I, I think Carol did a nice job at the last meeting, just talking about the need to do purchase orders. You know, one of the things that I found that, that this town, you, we have a switch, that we have Munis, we have the ability to do purchase orders, and that the town has not really ever engaged in that. Part of that is because the community, from, from at least when I came here, is very decentralized in its approach, and certainly decentralized in the procurement approach. I think that by having the accountant know through a purchase order what's being contracted with, so they have a contract, they issue a purchase order that matches up to that, and then you draw off the purchase order. So doing a purchase order system, which Munis already has, is an important piece to getting that. I think previous accountants that we've had, it, it is time consuming. It is a process that the auditors have recommended, but it is, it is an extra level of effort. And previous ones, I don't think they, we've kept them busy with other actions that have been needed, so I, I don't think it's been done just because of the, the volume of work that is entailed. I, I think Carol is of the mindset to, to focus and get this piece done, the, the purchase order. And just for folks, I mean, you don't want to do a purchase order for a, a ream of paper for $10. So I think that we set up that any contract over $50,000, which happens to be a threshold that they have in the procurement law, that probably makes sense. The other part of the, the procurement law, I think this is actually probably, I don't know if this part's changed. Any, any purchase over $5,000 usually requires a contract to be attached to it. A contract could be a purchase order as a simple contract. So the second part of the memo is that I think we should have standard contracts that we use. We do have standard contracts. There are two pages, and, you know, their, their level and functionality is probably fairly limited, being two pages. I know, Mr. Chairman, I think you had identified a, a couple other towns that had contracts that probably do a better job of, of covering us. One of the practices that you see in, in towns is that a vendor will submit a contract, and then the town will sign it. And that has happened here, and generally, those contracts, it's probably safe to say, don't benefit the town of Harwich, they benefit the vendor. So having the standard contract is something also that makes sense to, to do.
Thank you, Chris. Now, you mentioned the AIA, American Institute of Architects contract, base contracts. Now, that can't be used for goods and services, correct?
It's generally not used for that. It's, it's more for construction projects.
Okay. So I read them, I, I read an awful lot, so bear with me. But I read the Municipal Modernization Act from November of 2016, and in that, there was quite a few changes to procurement. One of them was, have, have we developed separate quote solicitation documents which include standardized written scope of work and incorporate the necessary statutory forms? Is that a practice that we're following, or one that would be part of the...
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think we have a standard spec sheet. I mean, in, in some ways, we do have a standard spec sheet, because all the specs are done by, of any substance is done by Bob Cafarelli. So he has a boilerplate. The forms are non collusion, they pay state taxes. That's standard, that's standard fare that we have in, as part of our process.
The other one, Chris, would be, how many people have we trained to post bids on comp buys, which is now an advertisement requirement along with the central register?
Yeah, I, I think...
If I'm doing it correct, just Bob, I mean, is that...
I think it is just Bob on that.
So I think where I'm going with this, Chris, and I won't bore you with all the details in here, but I will give them to you for the follow-up report that I'm going to ask for on this. If we only have... If we only have Bob Cafarelli, who was out sick last week, and, and you, who has town administrator functions and lots of them. It seems to me, and with the one contract that I pulled and several that I went back and read after the fact, looking for the detail, that we're not really doing it the way the Commonwealth Inspector General's Office spreadsheet says to do it and with the Municipal Modernization Act. And then I go back to the debate we had on assistant town administrator and functions. So a big reason we hired the, the assistant town administrator, one of the bigger reasons was for procurement, review and oversight. And then there's a whole description of what that, what that job would entail. Is there a reason why, I guess, is there a reason why Charlene's not doing it? And how are we going to get to the point where we don't have one person doing all of this work with the amount of money that we're spending in town and the amount of contracts we're entering into?
Yeah, I, I think in terms of when you hire people, you know, I look at the different skill sets. And we do have some in-house talent. I think Carolyn does a, a nice job in, in certain areas that she's been assigned. Now, Charlene doesn't necessarily have that procurement experience as a, as a, as a backdrop. So we would have to increase her, her skill set. I have, Ms. Chairman, I, I attended a, a session where we had how to set up a procurement office. So I brought that back from another town. And I did meet with Charlene to start to work on doing that. I think, you know, I, I hate to say this, but with so much on the plate, it's sometimes difficult to, to focus on things. But I, I think that that is something, as you've pointed out, that we need to have some additional focus and do. I, I think Mr. Cafarelli, having a, some health concerns and not being available has definitely highlighted the, the need to do that.
So if you're addressing it, that's good enough for me. I'd like to get some sort of timeline, not tonight, but to put all this together so that we do have a procurement department, I guess I would say. And, and really look at, you know, the fact that we did, that was part of the, part of the vote for the assistant town administrator was to bring that, bring that to the next level. The last piece, well, as Carol's here, it says, "All contracts over $10,000 must be certified by the town accountant. All change orders over $2,000 must be certified by the town accountant." I don't, we don't do that, or we haven't done that.
Yeah, I, I think to your point, if we, if we create a form and, and contracts and make that a mandatory sign-off, it depends now whether it's on there or not.
Okay. And that was the last piece for me in closing was, if I'm going to be asked to sign contracts, we're going to follow the process the way it's supposed to be followed, or I'm not putting my name on it. Anything on this, Larry?
Yeah, I haven't said it in depth as you have, Michael, but just hearing the discussion, it sounds to me like we desperately need a very visible process that outlines it from basically the town meeting warrant article through to the purchase request and through the process. And I, and I would like to further understand how munis can take care of that. Because if we get it set up with an identified process and with the computer, you know, information available, it should save us some time. I certainly like using standard contracts because that will help us cut down on legal fees. And we're not asking them to, to look at different vendor contracts. But I would agree, I think where you're going is, I mean, outside of personnel issues, a very clear process. And with the tools we have available to us, that would be a top priority for me.
Julie?
I agree. I think we need to better define the process. And I think that, you know, some of that also was spoken to in the audit report that we had. So I think anything we can do to clean this up quicker would be best.
Janelle?
Thanks for doing all that research. I have nothing to add.
Don?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The only thing I do have to add, I mean, you're absolutely right. And I have both the charter that's guiding me, plus which I used to be a senior contracting officer with the federal government. And the one thing I'd like to delineate for anybody who looked at this packet, there's a difference between being a chief procurement official and having signature authority. One guides the process, puts together in accordance with law what it is. I mean, even when I had an unlimited warrant, there were still sign-offs at, at process so that there were other eyes that, that got to look at them. And you didn't have carte blanche to just sign something. I would argue that looking at the charter, I wasn't here for when the, the delegation occurred, but looking at the charter and then looking at the state law relative to the charter, the selectmen still have signature authority for these things and have every right to look at the process and recommend some changes so that they can be sure that when they do affix their names, that whatever that process was has been followed from beginning to end. Nothing can get you into more trouble than either personnel issues or contract issues.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. So the next one is the, well, as we're on contracts, policy for approval of municipal contracts. So in 2014, October 2014, the board approved a policy to allow contracts 50,000 or less to be approved by the town administrator. I don't like the policy. I guess I'll just start there and, and, you know, I think contracts should be, the board, and, and I did go back, Chris, and, and so I'm not coming blind at this. Policy of the Board of Selectmen in Harwich was always, I think, prior to the October 14th, was the Board of Selectmen looked at all the contracts and signed them off. I don't think not signing them releases us of any liability. And to me, this goes, one, to liability and two, to the budget process and really paying attention to what we're spending our money on. So I think that policy, personally, I think that policy should be amended and we should be looking at the contracts. With this, I'll start with Janelle.
Well, I'm looking at the previous policy, which was the town administrator had the authority for 25,000 and under. That was 2009. I, I'm not going to pretend that I know a whole lot about this. I mean, I, but, but it's, looks like we, we did it. We've always given the town administrator some sort of authority without us having to approve or the board having to approve. I don't know what the policy was prior to that, but I, I don't really have an opinion on this. This is not my forte.
Larry?
Well, as you can see, I was around when we raised it from 25 to 50. And I think the thought process was that the town administrator should have some leeway to, to get basic things done without us overseeing everything. It was just so many actions coming forward. You know, we do that with the capital LA, for instance, and stuff where there's, and, and so I was just thinking on that was to let us concentrate on the bigger issues and, and not fine tune it to the detail there. So, you know, I have no problem with questioning that again, but that was our license to get the time due.
So what are your thoughts on the 50,000 now?
I think with the way the budget's grown and that, and that's a, becomes a smaller part of overall budget, I'd be okay with that. You know, that's part of our thinking there too, is that, you know, all of a sudden it's gotten, it's not as, doesn't look as big now when you have a $60 million budget as it did back even eight years ago.
So without, without, and please, Chris, don't take offense to this, but the, did you, did you know or were you aware that we hired a title examiner? We're going into contract, and correct me if I'm wrong, with a title examiner for the East Harwich properties to help us figure out the titles?
Yeah, it's less than $1,000.
But do you, wouldn't you want to know that that piece of business is going on in Harwich? And that's one. Then number two would be C D M. Smith. Recently, we had in our packet, because I asked that they be put in our packet, a 25,000 or $35,000 contract and a $20,000 contract to C D M. Smith for two different projects. And we would not have known, ultimately, we would not have really known about those contracts.
Yeah, you raise a good point, Michael, but let me, let me ask you, is one, does one stop the other? Should we not be notified in normal communication of what's going on outside of the, and then the signature's a different act, you know, the contract itself's a different activity? Are they, are they one and the same? If they are, then I would agree with you. But I'm not, I'm not clear that they're actually one and the same. You know, one's a, almost a communication issue that we should be aware of what's going on. And then, you know, town minister does his job, but.
Chris, you wanted to respond to that. I don't want to cut you off. Larry might have answered you.
Yeah, no, I, I, just in terms of like the C D M. Smith, you know, these are items that are in the budget. And I think they were underneath the $50,000 threshold. And I don't know whether you had brought it up originally or whether I had it as part of the administrator announcements. But I had kind of made a commitment that anytime there's something new or different that we're engaged in, that I would kind of disclose that. So on the C D M. Smith contract, and, you know, quite honestly, I, I have to chuckle that in 2009, I wasn't here in 2009, but the threshold was set at 25,000. It was probably based upon the bid law. Actually, when the bid law was 35,000, I came in and said, exactly as Larry indicated, that for the business, just so not every contract has to come before the board and get delayed, you know, quite honestly, that I would ask to go from 25,000 to 35,000 because that was the bid threshold. And the board at the time said, "Well, why don't you make it 50?" I think it's ironic that the bid laws have now changed to move that threshold up to 50. But, you know, under the charter, it's really the board. I mean, it's a delegation authority. So if the board wants to set it, you know, at 10,000, 25,000, the only thing I've said in the past, and I believe is, is consistent, you know, do you want to see, you know, $500 contracts, $1,000 contracts? And we're just going to slow the wheels of progress. So where that target is and where the comfort level is, I mean, there's four new people that sit in front of me that, that weren't here. Larry's the, the only one that was here when the 50,000 was decided. You know, quite honestly, Ms. Chairman, you know, I have nothing to hide. There's a lot of work that goes through, so I mean, I don't always inform everything because it's just, there's so much work going on. But I, and I certainly can try to get better, like on that, doing the title search. I thought I had, I disclosed that at a, a public meeting, that we were engaged in that. If not, then I, I stay.
It was only an example, Chris. It wasn't, because it was, it's really an example.
But just to add my final on that, I actually don't have a dog in this fight, whatever the board is comfortable with.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just kidding you what, what I'm thinking was.
Just so you know.
I'm saying that as a generic board.
Okay. Julie?
So I, you know, I don't, I don't have a, an opinion in the sense of going through every single contract. I, I, I don't think I want to see every single contract. At the same time, I, I think, you know, even if we could have, whatever might be easiest, like, let's just say we had a monthly or, you know, report of the contracts that have gone out or, you know, I don't know, I don't know if it needs to be weekly or something. I wouldn't mind knowing what contracts we've engaged in, but I don't know that I need to, you know, my, my feeling is not to have to see every single one. At the same time, I, I do believe that if, if overall we're responsible for them, we should know what they are, so.
Janelle?
I think Julie summed that up nicely.
Don?
Actually, to Julie's point, I long ago, impartially, to Chris's, I long ago got my head around the fact that this wasn't about the most efficient process. It's about you spending somebody else's money and having them have an assurance about how above board it all is. With that, I mean, I'm unaware, through you, Mr. Chair, I could ask, Chris, one of the things that I'd be looking to make sure of in the long term is, we, we've had the flip of this discussion about the capital plan, aggregating small things to become capital. The contracts are the other side of this, is you're supposed to put like things to aggregate into whatever the scope of that contract is. And you're not supposed to say, "Well, we're doing it with this company and the same thing over here this week, but we're doing a similar thing in a different area of the town in another week." If they're similar generically, they should be together. So I guess the question is, do we have an audit process for, for our contracts? Where there's a statistical review to see in a given year whether you're following the, the procurement regulations?
Yeah, what you're, what you're referring to, and certainly this practice has been brought to, to staff. So let's just use paper, just because it's simple. W B. Mason is a contractor. If, if individual departments go and go through the state contract, then they already comply with the law. So that, that becomes, that, that, that becomes a different issue. But if we did not have, if W, I shouldn't pick on W B. Mason, I just happen to see their trucks, they deliver stuff to us. So if W B. Mason was here and they were delivering, let's say, $5,000 over the course of the year of materials, specifically paper, to the selectmen, they were doing 5,000 directly to the water department, 20,000 to, to the D P. W., we're supposed to review that and make sure that we have a cumulative contract for all agencies. I, I don't know how well we do that. I, I know I have specifically, actually, the summary material, that's one of the things in the bid law, that you're, you're supposed to make sure it's a cumulative effect over the course of a year. So we certainly do encourage people to, to look at their spending over the life cycle. They have, I quite honestly, on those like paper things, they've moved that threshold up now to, to $50,000. And you just get three bids, so it is pretty easy for people. And that's a heck of a lot of, a heck of a lot of paper. So I, you know, I don't think there's anything big that's not being done cumulatively. But it is something that I try to make departments aware of that.
I, I don't want to bury the headline here, but that was just an example about, you know, splitting.
Yeah.
The real big question and the headline was, do we have a process to statistically review contracts in any given year?
For the cumulative effect of hitting over the threshold.
As an audit type thing, where somebody else came in and looked.
I, I believe we do, but that's a better question, and Carol left. So that's a, that's a better question for Carol.
We can get that, of course we can. Didn't get that in.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so is the board comfortable with the $50,000 mark?
I am. I am.
I'd rather have the 25.
Yeah, yeah, I am.
You're fine? Okay. So by consensus, that's fine. Leave it alone. Alright.
And that was part of that board discussion, Michael.
You're on the board, right?
Those guys.
Uh, Chris, Town Administrator's Report.
Well, you had, Ms. Chairman, under old business, the draft electronic.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so under old business, again, draft electronic communications policy for elected officials. The memo from Foster is in there, and it is in fact going to cost us $3,800 to get town email addresses for everybody on our committees.
I told you not to shoot the messenger.
So if we pass this policy, we're going to spend $3,800. And I guess to Tom, to, to Don's point, we're going to put a time limit on this because we can't expect it to happen overnight. Where do we want to go with it? Don?
I, I, I've been going back and forth, the two of me inside arguing with this, like, and I keep saying to myself.
Just two this week?
Yeah, just two this week. Part, partly, I'd be happy with the chairs, and I know this is different from what I've said in the past, to the extent that we utilize that second portion, that anybody who does anything has to C C. back into that bucket so that it's captured as part of the records of communication. I don't think we need everybody to have an email address, which would shorten up the implementation time. But everybody would have to be obligated, no matter what they did in communication, if it had something to do with them being the A B. C. Committee, that they had the C C., the A B. C. Committee's chair email, so that there was a chain of custody for records. I, I'd be okay with that. I don't think everybody needs to have an email.
Okay. Janelle?
I think everybody does need to have an email. If you're going to do it for one, I think you have to do it for everybody. So what I'm assuming is, there are 49 committees, he's saying, but four of them already have town webs, town email site assigned, town emails assigned. So there are 45 left, meaning the chair of each of those 45, right, only?
Yeah.
So the chair and then all staff and us, I, I think you have to, you have to have it.
So you want to do 45 times average of six on each committee?
No, no, no. 45 chairs.
Yeah, just the chair.
Just the chair.
That's what I was saying.
That's what we're saying. You don't want everyone on every committee, right?
No, no, no. Just the chairs.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Just the chairs.
That's in there.
Then we agree.
Oh.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Well, I just said that I think we do.
Okay.
Yes.
Julie?
I agree. I mean, I, it's kind of crazy that emails count, you know, costs that much, but I think we have to have it.
I think we, as we get into our I T. review, we're probably going to find that there's new software out there that might allow for something, something different.
It seems like it should be free. Google's free.
Larry?
Yeah, I agree with this. Yeah, we've gone through this discussion in some. Yeah, I agree with this. Yeah, we'd gone through this discussion in some jacks left, but on FinCom a year ago. Because we wanted to put an email address on our website for people to contact. And we realized quickly that that had to be one person. It couldn't be for everyone. And so that fits in this process. And then we, we charged the chair with, in the meeting, coming back to the meetings, you have to pay attention to meeting law and be sure that message gets around. So this works.
Go ahead.
So, back to the IT thing. While I believe that every chair should have a, a town email, I think maybe we should look at the IT first before we do this and spend the money. Because what if we do this and then two years from now, we get the new software? The other thing is, I've told you guys a number of times, the, Foster set it up on my phone for me, but many times the server can't be found wherever I am, if I'm in Chatham or wherever. So I'm getting, I'm having problems using it. So I think we first have to address IT before we assign email accounts to people for the tune of thirty-six hundred and ninety dollars.
Chris?
Yeah, I just, on, on that topic, again, I only go so far with technology. But my phone was blowing up and it kept saying I needed to put in a new password, I need to put in a new password, I need to put in a new password. And what happened is the system here went down for a weekend. So anytime your, your phone, when it links to the email account for town of Harwich, it has, it must check it every so often. And when the system here malfunctions, it's asking, at least in my case, from my phone to, to reestablish that connection.
Right.
I could reestablish it. It's not going to do anything because the system crashed.
Right.
So it, it, once Foster gets it up, that does fix itself. But I, I think we are in the process of doing the, the IT review. You know, I'd like to, I did say to Foster, you know, vacation schedules and such, that they, it's really taken a long time. I know they've gone through at least half the departments to see what technologies we have. I, I asked him if he would finish it. And if we're going to do something for the budget cycle to make adjustments, we'd want to have the money to, to be able to make those adjustments in the budget cycle. So hopefully, he's getting close to having a report. And I can have him and Scott, I'm going to butcher his last name.
Tillsley. Tillsley.
Tillsley. They've been working on it jointly. So they are going to prepare. And I can have them come in and do a report for the board.
So realistically, for an IT review to be finished, go through the budget process, we're looking at a town meeting going May.
I would, at least my recommendation would be, why don't we include it in the operating budget if, if we're going to have an adjustment?
And that's if we can find the money. So this, this would be a step in professionalism, customer service, and complying with open meeting law and public records requests for thirty-six hundred and ninety dollars until we do an IT review, which might not lead to any other change. And again, you know, our budget message was fairly clear. I don't think we're going to find a lot of money this year. So this would get us to that next level and get us people's emails on websites, get us so that the public can find chairman of committees.
Okay.
Don?
Yeah, and to that point, adding to it, 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 there are record retention requirements for doing public business. I mean, and there's an awful lot of people who are doing emails, like, one off here and there. We're not getting, the second part of this is equally important. We're not getting the CCs for many of those emails. And when we do get a free information request, we're relying on, you know, Bob or Bill to see if they can find it in their computer, which is often unorganized. It's just by time, not by subject. Me personally, I have everything segmented. So if, if it's government, it's government. I can find it in that bucket. But it would seem to me that we, in absent, how many people get assigned emails? We need a mechanism that, that we're on record as saying, you're responsible for sending us a copy of everything so that we have, that we're the custodians of records for whatever that period of time is that we have to retain them.
So with this policy is going to come US liaisons. They're going to have to work with the chairs of these committees and help walk them through this process. This policy passed and then stuck in a file is going to do absolutely nothing. So we're going to really have to hold hands and get, get people set up and walk them through the policy.
But going back to where we were at day one with this, if that's what the route we're going to take, and we have the chairman and everything, we have to also let them know, this is not something you share with everybody so that five of you have access to that one email and you can do business internally through an email box.
And that's our responsibility. So do we want to pass this? Do we want to get a motion on this? Or do you want to bring it back? Janelle?
Just to that point about not having multiple committee members on one email. Similarly, to the executive password for, for the confidential packets, is there a way maybe we could, as the liaisons, control the password? Or is that?
I can't even control my own house.
Well, Foster's going to control the passwords.
So could he change it every year?
He can do anything he wants, yes. He was in my email fixing some things the other day. So he, absolutely.
So maybe that's the, the solution.
So if a new chairman comes on next year, Foster can change the password.
Yeah, anytime someone changes out, yeah. That, that's standard practice. If someone leaves, we discontinue the, the email address.
Right.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Or it could be chair at.
Just chair at, yeah. You don't have to change the email. You can pay for it. Just change the password.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve moving forward with adding forty-five email accounts for the chair, chairs of each of our committees, boards, and commissions listed on our website at the cost of three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Is that okay, Chris? A motion?
Yes. One thing Dawn had said before, timeline, if we could maybe have sixty, ninety days, something.
Sixty, ninety something.
Within ninety days.
Ninety days.
Within ninety days.
That would be the only thing.
I'll still second that.
I mean, the one thing we also didn't talk about is the fact that we really need these in the sense of reducing liability for those chairs and for the town.
So a motion, do I have a second?
He's seconded it.
Don, second.
So any other discussion?
Do we need to amend it with the timeline?
She did.
She just did.
Okay.
She added it. Chris will just refer to that as the electronic communications policy for elected officials. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, Chris, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items here, just on the Sacroteca development. The board had asked to have the additional material done, to put those, put into place those elements for the value engineering. So we have finally got some of that material back. So we're, we're processing that. And so I just want to let the board know, there was a charge that was associated with that. I had told the board that I thought there would be a charge. I did request a discount because, you know, they were at fault for some of it. So they did, they did agree to that. Off the top of my head, I think it was sixteen thousand is what they were looking for. Twelve thousand was the number that was agreed to make those changes. The majority of that was the engineers to do the screws into the ground as opposed to the pilings being driven. On Cape Tech School, I, I think I am going to try to put this on under administrator announcements for each meeting until the election, just to make sure folks are aware. In the packet, there was the, the two ballots. So if people want to get a sample of what the specimen ballot would look like, again, the, the two ballots, the, the Cape Tech School, their ballot is the assessment that the town would have for doing the project that the superintendent alluded to. And the second ballot, the second process, that has to be done same time. But you would have, you would vote two ballots. It is for the town to do a debt exclusion. So when you, if you're part of building a project, we have the mechanism to pay for the project. So debt exclusion pays for that, pays for that project.
Chris, I commend you for putting that on the ballot as well. No other town on the Cape did it by the sounds of it. Barnstable had their town meeting, but.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I honestly really believe, and I mentioned this, I happened to be in Yarmouth on Friday, and I, I mentioned the finance director, what are you going to do, you know, in two years from now? And, and that information hadn't been even relayed to him. And, and I think a lot of towns are going to get a potentially a surprise.
We're being very responsible to the voters by showing them the bill at the same time we're showing them the project.
And then the next one is the design plans for Station Two. They are planning on coming in, the chief's planning on coming in. One of the things, just in the marketplace, that we have been seeing, as superintendent said, you know, three years ago, the cost per square foot was three hundred, I think he said, three twenty-six, and now it's four, four twenty-six, in that range. And we're having similar issues with the fire station. So they, they are going to come in and do a presentation. And then if there's any questions in regards to the weekly reports, I can certainly look at that. And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Larry, Selectman's Report or questions?
No questions. Just very briefly, a heads up. There was a, at the Selectance Meeting last Friday, a presentation was made by the, I'll get the title right. It's the Cape Cod or it's the Fishery, Commercial Fishery Alliance, I think it is. And I think they'll probably come in front of the board asking for support. Michael, you're much bigger fisherman than I am. I catch little sculp with my grandkids. But the issue is that we have river herring that we all protect, and we pulled those down maybe ten, twelve years ago. There's also ocean herring. And supposedly, there's guys coming out with these huge boats with a net, a hundred yards maybe long, it net these, all types of fish, but they pull out all the ocean herring and a lot of the river herring. So the commercial fishermen, you know, the herring are the bottom, not real near the bottom, if I can say that, of the food chain. And so they, they're trying to get support from the, from the alliance. They'll come to us. If not, I'll probably ask them to come to us. What they want is a letter of support. They, their solution is to move the boundary out to three miles. It's now only maybe a half mile, something like that, to move the netting out further to protect the, both the river herring and the ocean herring. So just a heads up. I'll bring that back.
Thank you, Larry. Julie?
Just that Larry and I both attended the Cape Housing Seminar, the first week of it, and will be attending again Thursday and for the next four weeks after that.
The Institute.
Institute, sorry.
Janelle?
I don't have any.
Although I'm going to go to Walseron in the afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair. Earlier in the meeting, I abstained over a stello thought. I didn't have internet access through the building, but I do now. And I've just got, out of curiosity, since there was a letter sent to the chair that precipitated this, I'm not sure whether the chair would like to pursue this or put it on the agenda or whatever. But there's at least one other member who's had the same number, if not more, absences that he's not requesting any action taken against. And I, I judge that by minutes. And having said that, there are no minutes for the planning board from July twenty-fifth forward. They've had four meetings. So.
This is liaison.
Aye.
Will you check with the chair?
Yep.
In, in what the rationale is for not taking action on another person who had the exact same circumstances.
You'll share that other person with Julie?
Sure will.
Thank you. The only other thing for Selectman's Report, I put the PowerPoint presentation done last week by our finance director, Carol Coppola, in the packet tonight because it wasn't in the packet last week. So just for the public to be able to view it. And Chris, if we could send that and the audit management letter to Jamie to put on the website, she said she didn't get that.
And just on that point, Mr. Chairman, I did meet with Carol in, in your goals and objectives. You did have a, a formal letter. So I have asked her to draft that. So she's in process.
Thank you. And then the budget warrant timeline's just in there for informational purposes so you can see what's up next. Which is nothing until November, October thirtieth.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have, I attended the, the almost meeting of the CPC the other night.
The almost meeting?
They didn't have a quorum.
But FinCom.
Well, and FinCom. I had back-to-back, no quarums. But on the CPC meeting, they did provide me with the, all the applications. So I do have that factored in and built into the capital budget. And I hopefully will have that for the next meeting. So we'll be able to do a comprehensive review of the, all the capital requests that we have received.
Yeah, just.
Including CPC.
Yeah, for the board's knowledge, it's three million dollars worth of requests, and I think one point four million. Don't quote me, Bill. It's not exact, but there's at least twice the request that there is money. So CPC, I think, would like us to prioritize our.
I, I did do that this, this morning, this afternoon, Mr. Chairman. It's not quite that bad. It's, they have more requests than they have money.
Maybe we'll talk about that next week's meeting as well.
Yep.
Great. Motion to adjourn?